Okay, let's get started. We've got this evening, we've got a presentation from Carl Miller with Compass on the Fiscal Impact Tool. So we'll start out with them and then we'll go to agenda review for tonight's hearing. We do have some changes and things we want to talk about. So Carl, you've got the floor.
Great, thank you so much, Celine. Do you mind if I share my screen? Just push the share screen button, I assume?
Yep, if you don't have, you should have that capability.
Okay, great. And thank you for your time tonight. Let's see, showing the wrong screen. Hold on just a second. Let's do that one. All right, hopefully you can see that, is that right? Please let me know if you're not seeing my screen that says Compass Fiscal Impact Tool. But just, just a quick big background, my name is Carl Miller. I work with Compass. A number of years ago, I worked for the city of Boise in the planning department. And I know just the long nights and the complex and difficult decisions that planning and zoning commissioners have to make. So I really appreciate your time today and I hope this is worth the time. This is a new tool that we've developed really to help you with those complex, difficult decisions, providing one additional data point in front of you from a financial standpoint. So you can see the ramifications of the different development proposals and scenarios that you see in front of you. So I just wanted to, there we go. See, start off my presentation with a few rhetorical questions that I'd like to have you think about in the background as I'm giving you a little bit more information about the Fiscal Impact Tool. But think about, you know, you have to review subdivisions all the time. If one is approved, can you afford the new services that will be required to those, to that location? And do you know if your comprehensive plan is financially viable? What's the impact of House Bill 389? Can you answer any of these questions right now? I know that in part you can, but I think this tool that I'd like to introduce in just a second will really help us with that conversation and provides more information to help with that. So I'm going to cover what the Fiscal Impact Tool is, the role of Compass, and why we developed this with the help of your staff there at the city of Boise. And then I'm going to save quite a bit of time for Q and A, just so that way I can make sure that I'm responding to the questions that you have. So I hope you're familiar with Compass, we're the Community Planning Association of Southwest Idaho. We're a metropolitan planning organization for Ada and Kenyon Counties. And really, we've been tasked with looking out long range, 30 years plus into the future, and saying, what is the Treasure Valley going to look like? And how are we going to provide the transportation infrastructure needed to make that happen? And so we receive federal highways, federal transit funds for highway improvements, transit planning pathways, whole multimodal approach to transportation planning. And in fact, it's not even just a multimodal approach. As our Board of Directors, who are the mayor and other city council members, represent on our board, have really positioned us to say, not just what are we going to do with these federal dollars that come in? What is the impact and the ramifications? And what does this mean to the way we do land use planning? Or what is this going to do to our ability to provide affordable housing and preserve open space? Or protect our farmlands? And so we've really done a long range transportation plan that not just looks at how are we going to build roads, but how are we going to build communities? And that plan, Communities in Motion 2040 2.0, we're actually working on Communities in Motion 2050, really addresses this and how are we going to work together as all the different stakeholders out there to make sure that we're really building communities and not just moving vehicles faster down the road. We're also Council of Governments, like I said, our Board of Directors really meets on a variety of regional issues and collaborate on ways that we can move forward the best planning together as a valley. And so one of those things that our Board has been concerned about for a number of years is, as we've been growing so quickly, the second fastest state over the last 10 years is, you know, are we positioning ourselves in a way that we can sustain this growth? Or are we, are we going to burden future generations with the decisions we make today? And so with that, the Board of Directors asked us to look into doing, developing a Fiscal Impact Tool to really answer those questions. At its simplest, Fiscal Impact Analysis is really just a calculation of the expected revenues from taxes, permits, fees, property taxes for the bulk of that. And then compared to the expenditures, as we, you know, put in new development and growth, can our police, can our fire serve those areas? Are we going to have to build new substations in a particular location to serve that additional growth? What about our schools? What about our, all the different things that we do? Can we serve that with new growth? And as we crunch the numbers, if there's a net positive, that's, that's financially viable. And if not, maybe that's not the end of the world, but we do need to consider that as far as the overall planning and sustainability of our, of our community. So our Fiscal Impact Tool looks at a whole wide range of public sector services, from transportation to schools, safety emergency service, parks and recs administration. In fact, there's over 100 different public service categories built into the mechanics of this Fiscal Impact Tool. So we really look at a variety of things. And, and we also looked at both the, an average cost approach. What does it cost to, you know, per person, but also marginal cost? So when it comes to schools, we didn't just say, okay, every, you know, new hundred lots subdivision is going to require this many more children and this many schools. We really looked, is there capacity in different areas for that? And maybe in certain areas, there is capacity. The school's not overcrowded and others in the Boise School District, you'll find that schools are at their limit, but, but oftentimes they're not. And so we really looked at that marginal cost of what is it going to take? And not every area is the same. So what this Fiscal Impact Tool is not, it's not an economic impact tool. It doesn't do a lot of that private sector side analysis. It doesn't say, you know, a new large business comes in, what's the number of jobs that we're going to create? Or what's the spillover in parts? You know, now we need dentists and restaurants and those kind of things. This is specifically looking at public sector entities and what the fiscal impact is on those. It's, it's not more than a model or a tool. It's, it's a very effective and a good, great data point. But it requires the assumptions to go into this to be accurate. And obviously with any tool, garbage in, garbage out. And so we worked closely with your staff, both in the planning department, Public Works, Emergency Services and, and really looked at what are the geographic areas that are served? And what are the capital improvement plans look for as far as new projects coming down the pike? As well as what are the, what is the long range plan say? Can we serve this with additional services in the future or not? And so we really looked at that to make sure that that was staying current and accurate. We're going to have to keep this model up and keep working with your staff to make sure that it's, it's up to date. It's current, it's accurate. But I did want to, first of all, thank the Boise city staff for, for helping us out so much. The information they have at the very localized level that we just don't have at the regional level really helped this model to be accurate and perform well. But then last, this, this tool is not an end all be all. We hope that it's a useful tool and it's a useful data point, but it's just one of many factors. There is many times that a community may want to approve a development, even though it's not financially viable. Affordable housing is becoming a huge concern in the Treasure Valley. And many times, an affordable, especially subsidized housing project may not pencil. And yet it still meets many of your other comprehensive plan goals and objectives. Our developer, our consultant that helped us worked on this, did one in Boulder, Colorado, and they found that restaurants were actually a net negative. And yet to the Boulder community, restaurants meant tourism and economic development and, and just quality of life. And so that was one consideration that they had as far as the financial viability, but there's other things to consider too. So maybe I'll pause just for a second to see if there's any questions kind of on why we built theirs or how we built this. And then I'll show you a little bit more about the ins and outs of this tool. Should I stop here, Celine, or should I keep going?
Do you guys have any questions? Okay, it looks like not at this time, Carl, thank you.
Okay, great, I'll just keep plowing through. Please feel free to interrupt me if you do have any questions. But I didn't want to give you a sense of how this tool works. And really, as you start to see the reporting come out, so you'll, you'll be familiar with this and you'll, you'll know kind of the background here. This is our Fiscal Impact Subarea Map. As I talked previously, we wanted to make sure not to treat every community the same. In fact, even within the city of Boise, we broke up the area into many different groups or subareas. You'll see that they're very familiar with you based on your planning areas, based on, you know, what areas could be served easier, more difficult, or who serves it? You know, we split up, especially in Kenyon County, several highway districts out there, several school districts. So we had to split things very much based on who is the service provider in that area. And so we have over a different, 100 different fiscal impact areas. And each one is, it has different input factors and output factors based on that. Again, we developed this based on feedback that we got from your staff and others. For the tool, we have a number of different scenario inputs.
Carl, sorry, if you don't mind, we will interject. Commissioner Blanchard does have a question.
Thanks, Carl. Can you tell us what these zones are, these Taz zones or?
To what, what are these zones?
Yes.
Yeah, so these are, these are not our transportation analysis zones. We tried to match them to those wherever we could. But these are really based on two things, who, who serves it? So we looked at the school district that serves it, the highway district that serves it, whether it's in the city limits or not, or could be in the, in the near future. Worked with your staff to define those things as well as, are there different demographic inputs? Is somebody that lives, is a house that's built in the North End going to be different than a house that's built in Southeast Boise based on housing value, a number of students generated, vehicle miles traveled, generated a number of different factors? So we tried to break this area. Obviously, we couldn't do it so granular that, you know, your, your house and your neighbor's house are going to be different, but enough so that way we could really get into that specifics of what is the impact to the community based on the location and some of those service providers? Does that make sense?
Great, thank you so much, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. And do, please do interrupt me if I didn't cover something in enough detail. So as I was talking about the, the service scenario inputs that will plug into this, we did want enough, again, enough variety that we could say, you know, how is a single family residential development going to be different from a multifamily? Or, you know, a commercial or office? So we have three different single family residential types, five different multifamily types, 15 employment types, and then we can mix and match, you know, as we have mixed use development. This is meant to cover roughly 95% of all development types. Most development will fit into one of these. Every once in a while, you'll see, you know, an expo center, you know, Expo Idaho will redevelop. Or, you know, if you're looking for, you know, a minor league baseball stadium, that's really not one of these typical types. So we would have to do kind of a special analysis on that. But most of the time, the types of conditional use permits or rezones or the applications that you see, most of them fit into these input types that we have identified already. And then like I highlighted, based on the location and the type of development it is, each one will develop different, you know, persons per household, students, vehicle miles traveled, law enforcement calls, fire EMS calls, that all either generate revenue or cost in terms of service out to that location. So each one is different based on the, the land use type as well as those locations. So that's why we have so many different those geographic areas and then so many different land use types that we've just, just shown you. Compass will be the official source for reporting on this. We will include this in our development checklist that you, I know you've seen several times this year. That checklist will then include an additional page on the Fiscal Impact. For each one of these, we will generate this based on, we'll run, run the numbers through the tool and then it will indicate, you know, the amount of revenues versus expenditures for the city, the county, the school district, the highway, Valley Regional Transit. When that break even year is, this example would be with a grocery store and 50 multifamily units. But, you know, different examples would generate obviously different results. We can run tables and graphs and make that in a more visual way. We will include this with those development checklist that we're doing. You'll see that the checklist that I've included for you on this screen is slightly different than the ones that you've been seeing lately. Well, as we're updating our Communities in Motion 2050 Plan, we really want to match our new goals that we have, make this a more useful document. And so this will be the, the new look for that. But you'll also receive a supplementary page, really just about Fiscal Impact Analysis and will indicate how well that proposal does as far as we meeting the city, the county, and the highway district, and the school districts finances. And then we'll also indicate the break even point. So that's how we'll be reporting to this, these things to you. We're also developing a web-based tool that we're going to share with your staff. So that way, even, you know, a pre-app meeting with the developer, they can use this and, and crunch the numbers and maybe have a good discussion and dialogue about, are there different things that we can do even at that very early stage of planning? To say, what if we, you know, added this housing type? Or what if we added this commercial type to really make sure that from those early discussions, we're making sure that we're thinking about the financial viability of this? So we're still working on that. We have to work through a few technical and legal issues before we can provide that tool to your staff. But we think that'll be really helpful for your staff to have that whenever they need it to, to, to run different analysis, look at your comprehensive plan, really kind of do whatever they need to do to be able to use this tool as well. Official reporting will come through the development checklist and this supplemental page. So with that, I've tried to cover a lot in a short amount of time, a lot for you to chew on, but also a lot for us to care and feed into this tool. So I wanted to again, thank your staff for, for helping us out with developing this tool. A lot of information we just don't know at the regional level. But also a little bit of a hint that we will have to keep this tool fed and maintained. And so we'll, we'll be meeting with your staff on a regular basis to keep this tool accurate and up to date as possible. So anyway, I, I hope I've, I've covered enough for you. I'd like to answer any questions we have with the remaining time. I know you have a full agenda tonight, but let me just stop there and, and thank you and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Carl. Do we have questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Gillespie?
This is, I guess, for Carl, but also for Celine and the, the cast of characters in the back. So for like, like, when is this going to matter? Like, when does this, when is any sort of economic or fiscal impact relevant in, in any of our permit or decision-making applications? Let me refresh, for which ones? Since we hear about seven different animals, which animals would we be sort of allowed to bring this into the record as a criteria?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, so we're really excited about this new tool. We'll work through that at the city level with the department heads to determine exactly how we're going to use it. Compass will be using it to give it a high level on their, their list. What do they call that?
Yeah, they're, for lack of a better word, it's Carl, it's like your checklist that you always send us.
Development checklist, yeah.
Development checklist.
Yeah, so Compass will give you a high level on their development checklist. At the city, though, we're definitely probably looking at it with annexations. We could do it with large rezones. We see actually a lot of applications that we can use for it, but we will need to get a little bit more familiar with it and then probably come back and talk with all of you on its applicability. But it's, it's, it's good information on just about any development that comes through, that we have an idea of where it is on our long-term maintenance and, and the fiscal needs it has at the city.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
James, are you still on the line?
He is.
Could you pop up for us?
I'm, I'm here, Mill.
So James, it just, it kind of seems to me like, I'm thinking of our approval criteria for each of our different application types. And I'm sort of thinking that for rezones and annexations, where one of the approval criteria is very, very clearly is in the city's best interest. And, and this could be part of making that determination. But for say, a subdivision or a PUD or a variance or some of the more, you know, we used to say quasi judicial permits. I don't think they have in there a criteria related to the city's finances. So I'm sort of thinking this is, this would be useful for rezones and annexations, but I don't see how it would be that useful for subdivisions, PUDs, CUPs, variances and that stuff. What are your thoughts?
I think you're right on there, Mill. Some of the information may, maybe, may have some use, some facts, some smaller facts. But on, on the whole, it's, it, it doesn't sound like it's going to give you that yes or no that you need for any given criterion. I think you're on it.
Well, Madam Chair, it, it could be used for just information and not necessarily findings. And it could be used to compare densities. We see it in the city of Boise and other cities that many times as we're working towards densities that's in, in one area compared to another. It, I think it's really good to understand what infrastructure we already have, which ones are going to demand more. And if there's an opportunity at the site to have more or less density, it could be informational or information that could benefit us at that time too.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Blanchard, I'm sorry, Dan Lee. I just said Chris.
A few questions and then I guess a general comment about, about Commissioner Gillespie's comment is that the Local Land Use Planning Act is, is pretty specific on, on a lot of the things that we're able to consider. In my opinion, we've narrowly defined those very wide and general opportunities. However, that's in our state code. Economic viability, adequacy, adequacy of, of public facilities are all things that we could object or, or deny an application for. I'm not, I don't know about the tool's output to be able to say if we, if it's a tool to use for such a thing. But my point, broader point is that Lupa does give us a lot more free rein than, than what we want to believe. Secondly, a couple of questions for, for Carl. Carl, can you give us a sense of the scale of projects that this tool will be utilized for? In other words, the things that we should expect to see ranging from the low end to the high end? You don't need to explain so much, but just sort of on, at what threshold should we start to see these things come in? That's question number one.
Okay, so Commissioner Danley, great question and something I should have covered. Our development checklist currently, we run that and provide that information as, you know, a data point for you and for any development at 50 residential units or more, or an equivalent amount of commercial space. So equivalent amount of traffic generation. So you'll see that not for, for every lots bit split, small subdivision, just for my sanity, that would take me running this, you know, all day, every day. So we, we will continue to provide that with our development checklist at that 50 unit threshold or above. If there are, just like our checklist, if there are a smaller one that's maybe more interesting, for some reason you want to have that information, just have the, your staff contact me. We've done that before for smaller ones where we didn't meet that threshold, but it was still important. So i- if your staff contacts me, I'd be happy to do it for smaller ones. Obviously, ramp that up, anything higher than that, we are also going to run that. As you have maybe things that aren't development specific, but maybe you're looking at a sub-area plan or a citywide comprehensive plan. This can also be a very helpful and effective tool in, in understanding, you know, what are the financial ramifications of, of those policies, those colors on the map or those densities? So as you get into that process, and if, if this would be something you'd also like for that, again, your staff can get in touch with me and, you know, let's identify those criteria from an early stage. But we'd be happy to provide that for more generalized planning as well.
Great, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley, go ahead.
Carl, is there a cumulative nature to this model? Should we expect to see, you know, every so often, quarterly, annually, whatever the case may be? Hey, here's how things are going based on the decisions that have been made so that we can kind of get a sense of the bigger picture and not just a singular application, you know, every month kind of a deal?
Yeah, Commissioner Danley, another good question. We do an annual report on the development checklist that we provide to our, one of our work groups, our demographic work groups. And that'd be a great addition to that annual report we do for the checklist. It's, it's really just how many we've done, where are they in a good sense? So it, it helps us with the conversation of where is growth occurring and where should we forecast growth? But that would be a great addendum to that is to indicate, you know, what are the cumulative impacts by city, by sub-area? So that's something I will put down on my to-do list. And I think that's something that we can add to that and really help with having those conversations about what is, what is this doing? What, what is growth doing to our finances in the valley?
Last question.
Sure, go ahead.
More, more of a comment, Carl, I've known you too long to put you on the spot, so I won't do that to you. But more of a comment, and that is that if, if Compass is the purveyor of federal funds and the distribution thereof, and we have a model that is basically telling all of the cities within the Treasure Valley under the umbrella of the MPO and RPO, then of how things are going, at least with respect to this tool, then what that tells me is that we're going to know there are some cities that are doing a pretty good job of being financially responsible with our, our limited resources. And then there are cities that are not, and the cities that are putting a bigger strain on our regional resources, whether they be state funds or federal funds. Well, what do we do, what do we do about that, right? What, what's the discussion at that point? Because a tool like this is, in my opinion, useful to determine who's a bad actor, who's a good actor. And not to suggest Carl's going to solve the problem there, but you know, when you're distributing federal funds and you have, again, some municipalities that are acting in a way that are responsible with these types of decisions and not, not straining our limited resources and others maybe not as much. It may be a discussion, especially for our own board members for our, for, for Compass, just a thought.
Madam Chair.
Great, go ahead, Commissioner Blanchard.
Carl, I was hoping to learn what the tool is. Is it an off-the-shelf application or was it developed in-house? And I'll, I'll start with that.
Commissioner Blanchard, great question. The tool is, it's a Microsoft Excel tool. It was developed, we hired a consultant named Tischler Bice, who's fairly nationally well-known and reputable for doing this type of analysis. In fact, I learned about Fiscal Impact Analysis at a American Planning Association Conference about 10, 12 years ago from a session that Tischler Bice led. So they developed this, they personalized this through the conversations that we had with your staff and of course others. So that way we made sure that we reflected your budget and other budgets as well as capital improvement plans, plans that you have and, and, and budgets that you have adopted. So it is a completely customized tool built for, specifically for Compass and its member agencies by, by Tischler Bice, our consultant on this.
Great, thank you so much, Carl. That was really informative, great information.
Great, thank you. Just to let you know that you will start to see these probably this week. Well, we'll start to, to start using this tool. We wanted to do this outreach to make sure everybody was understood the background and, and history and had a chance to ask questions. But then we'll start using this tool really with any of those development checklists that we just outlined. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it. You guys do a lot of hard work, so thanks, keep up the good work.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thanks, Carl. Great, as far as agenda review.
All right, as far as agenda review. We've got item letter A, PUD 1922, which is a time extension for a PUD. We are recommending approval, it's not a public hearing, so we can just go straight for consent. Item number B is a resolution for the State Street Urban Renewal District project. You don't often see, the commission doesn't often see resolutions. I think the last time we saw one was last fall for the amendment to the West Side Urban Renewal District. This is not a public hearing item, although we have been informed that a member of the public might want to speak on this tonight, so it might just be easier to take their testimony. There was just some confusion on the noticing procedures for this item. Since it's a resolution, we don't have to, there's no noticing requirements for this resolution. It's simply to have the commission confirm that this does conform with Blueprint Boise. The public hearing and everything like that will be held at City Council later in October.
Okay, so no staff presentation tonight for this?
We do have one available just to kind of level set everyone and to go over the process. We'll be brief.
Thank you.
If we do have to hear it.
Okay.
Item number one is DRH 21-144 at 200 North Fourth Street. You may have recognized this project. This is an appeal for the Design Reviews Committee of their approval for a mixed use building here downtown. We also haven't had many design review committee appeals lately, so we, this is an open record. You should view this just like an administrative level application getting appealed. So there's no, we're creating a whole new record tonight. It's, there's no parties of record or anything like that.
Sorry, there's no what?
There's no parties of record, so it's just an open record this evening. Josh will make his presentation, but Design Review Committee does have a limited purview. And the land use part of the application should not be before you all tonight.
Great.
Any questions on that one? Okay, number two, DRH 21-208 was an appeal for a temporary expansion of a patio that has been withdrawn. It was noticed for this hearing, so we'll still need to make note of that, but we don't have to hold a hearing for that. Number three, CVA 21-21, a variance on 17th Street, is requesting the deferral to next Monday, September 20th. Number four, CP 21-39 is a modification for outdoor storage on Grand Forest and Highway 21. We are recommending approval, we're not aware of any opposition, so we can try for consent.
Perfect, when we get to the public hearing portion, we'll go through the steps and be sure to get your written test for it. No, you're fine, this is just work session until six o'clock and then we'll go through each item. Yep.
Okay, so insider step, we'll be hearing that one.
Great.
Number five, PUD 21-31, the PUD on Maple Grove at 2955 Maple Grove, they are requesting deferral to October 4th. And number six, a similar PUD on Maple Grove, PD 21-32, also requesting deferral to October 4th. Number seven is an appeal of CCC 21-245. It's an appeal of an approval for a co-location for a wireless communication facility on Stewart Avenue. We are recommending denial, and like always, we will always hear appeals. So we've got a couple, I don't think we have anyone signed up in advance. But I assume there will be some folks attending. Number eight is an appeal of CUP 21-35. And that's the Planning Director's approval for a modification to a previously approved conditional use permit. We are recommending denial. We do have one person signed up. So we will be hearing that one this evening. Number nine, PD 21-37 and sub 21-40 at 2393 North Wildwood. We are recommending approval. We did have a couple of people signed up this morning, so we will be hearing this one. Number 10, CVA 21-35 is a variance on 22nd Street to encroach in the rear yard setback for a second story addition. We are recommending approval. We're not aware of any opposition, so we will try for consent. Number 11, PUD 21-39 is that gallon and federal way. This might look familiar as well. This is a modification to increase the density for a previously approved planned unit development. We are recommending approval, there was neighborhood opposition, and we did have a few people sign up. So we will be hearing this item. And number 12, CP 21-37, modification to a CUP to allow for temporary parking on Miller Street. We are recommending approval. I'm not aware of any opposition and no one signed up on the signup sheet, so we can try for consent. That, I think, will be enough this evening. So in summary, we might hear letter B. We will hear number one. Number seven, number eight, number nine, and number 11.
And it sounds like number four.
Thank you, I didn't write that down. Number four. And we'll see what else comes in on the signup sheet.
Great.
Okay, five minute break, ready, go.
Thank you.
All right, let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing. A few things to start out with for tonight's proceedings. Everyone from the public entering the hearing virtually has automatically been muted and cannot speak. As the item you're interested in comes up for discussion, you'll be called upon and unmuted. There is a chat function in Zoom. This is not part of the record and should only be used if technical difficulties arise. Our procedures for public hearings begin with a presentation from the planning team. Then we'll go to the applicant and then the representative of the Registered Neighborhood Association, followed by questions from the commission. After that, we proceed to public testimony stating, starting with those who are in person, then who signed up on the online signup sheet in advance, and then anyone else who raises their hand virtually. If you're attending through your telephone, you can type in star nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict with this time as it is limited in code. And finally, the applicant is allowed up to five minutes for rebuttal, after which the public hearing is closed and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Celine. We are citizen volunteers appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. We make final decisions on conditional use permits, variances, and appeals, and recommendations to the city council on subdivisions, rezones, annexations, and code or comprehensive plan amendments. Any decision made tonight may be appealed to the city council, provided that the appeal is filed within 10 days of this hearing. In order to file an appeal, you must have given written or oral testimony at tonight's meeting. So that's why it's important you give your name and address when you testify tonight. We utilize a consent agenda. This means that if the applicant agrees with the staff report and if there is no public opposition, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. All items that are placed on the consent agenda are approved with one motion without further public comment. For items not on the consent agenda, we will hold a full public hearing in the order just detailed a few minutes ago with staff, applicant, neighborhood association, and then the public testimony. Thank you all for attending tonight, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Stan.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Squires.
Here.
Blanchard.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Gillespie.
Finfrock.
Here.
Danley.
Here.
All present.
Great, so first off, item two has been withdrawn. This is DHR 21-208 for the Cocktail Company LLC, which was originally deferred from August 2nd, 2021 at 1509 North 13th Street, an appeal for a zoning certificate. That item has been withdrawn, so we will not hear that tonight. We do have a couple of deferral requests, so I'm going to start with those. The first request we have is item number three. This is CVA 21-21 for Michaela Todd, deferred originally from July 19th, 2021, requesting deferral to September 20th, 2021. This is at 715 North 17th Street, a variance to encroach into the rear yard setback for the expansion of an existing accessory structure. Is there anybody, is there anybody present who wants to testify on this item that would not be able to return on September 20th? Please virtually raise your hand or so in person. Okay, seeing none.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Move to defer item number three to September 20th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, a second from Commissioner Moore. If there is no discussion, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Squires.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Gillespie.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Great, the next item requesting deferral is item number five. This is PUD 21-31 for South Beck and Baird, deferred originally from August 9th, 2021, requesting deferral to October 4th, 2021. This is 2955 North Maple Grove Road, a conditional use permit for planned residential development comprised of 10 multifamily units. Is there anybody present tonight who would like to testify on this item that is unable to return to the October 4th date? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing none. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I move to defer item number five to our October 4th meeting.
Second.
Great, second from Commissioner Moore. If there is no discussion, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Squires.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Gillespie.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, next up is item number six. This is PUD 21-32 for South Beck and Baird, deferred from August 9th, 2021, requesting deferral to August 4th, 2021. This is at 3091 North Maple Grove Road, a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of 18 family units, multifamily units. Is there anybody present that would like to testify on this item tonight who is unable to return to the October 4th date? Please raise your hand or do so virtually. Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Schaefer.
Madam Chair, I move to defer item number six to our October 4th meeting.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Moore. Thank you, if there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Squires.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Gillespie.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, great, so next up, we will build our consent agenda. So the first item that I will place on the consent agenda is item A. This is PUD 19-22 for Great Western Capital LLC, requesting a time extension, a two-year time extension at 2416 South Grant Avenue. The next, oh wait, so skip that one, sorry. The next item for consideration of the consent agenda is item number four.
Madam Chair, let's try to see if we can.
Number four.
Letter B.
Oh, B, okay, great. Okay, we'll try with item B. This is a resolution, RES 1-21 for State Street Urban Renewal District Project, a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Boise City, Idaho, validating conformity of the urban renewal plan. Is there anybody who would like to testify on this item tonight? Please virtually raise your hand. Or in person. Okay, seeing none, then we will place item B on the consent agenda. Okay, four.
One.
We're hearing it, okay. The next item for consideration, sorry, a little housekeeping there, is item 10. This is CVA 21-35 for BGA Planning and Design, PLLC at 1412 North 22nd Street, a variance to encroach into the rear yard setback of a second story addition. Is the applicant present? Okay, I do see a hand raised online. Ms. Holbrook, are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? Just give us one moment while we, oh, there you go, when you unmute.
Hello, hi.
Hi.
Yes, I believe we are. Yeah.
Great. Okay, and is there anybody present tonight that was looking to testify in opposition of item 10 tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will place item 10 on the consent agenda. The next item, last item for consideration is item 12. This is CUP 21-37 for LKV Architects at 1151 West Miller Street. This is a modification to a previously approved conditional use permit to continue to allow a temporary parking use. Is the applicant present? Great, I see a hand up. Toby, just give us a moment while we switch you over to speaking. And once you unmute, are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? You're muted.
Yes, we are.
Perfect, thank you. And is there anybody present tonight that would like to testify in opposition of this item tonight? Item 12. Okay, seeing none, we will place item 12 on the consent agenda and the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I move to approve the following items on the consent agenda with all their respective terms and conditions of their staff reports. Items A, B, 10, and 12.
Second.
Great, a second from Commissioner Finfrock. If there is no discussion, will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Squires.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Gillespie.
Hi.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to start now with item number one. This is DRH 21-144 for Better Change for East Downtown, originally deferred from July 19th, 2021, at 200 North Fourth Street. This is an appeal of the Design Review Committee's approval of a new 13-story mixed-use building. And we'll start with staff, please go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Josh Wilson with the Design Review Team, and I'm here tonight to discuss the appeal of DRH 21-00144 for the construction of a 13-story and 11-story mixed-use building consisting of two towers with ground floor retail, office space, and five floors of structured parking. It's not often that this body sees an appeal of a Design Review Committee decision, so I thought I'd just start out with some parameters for you tonight. So the Design Review Committee is tasked with the review of building design, landscaping, and site design as they relate to the design guidelines. The Design Review Committee is specifically prohibited from taking into account reductions in density or building height. And additionally, the land use is not the purview of the Design Review Committee. The application being appealed before you tonight really just relates to building design, landscape design, and site design. So for reference, and as a reminder, this application is located at 200 North Fourth Street, very near the core of downtown Boise. It's located on the western two-thirds of the block surrounded by Idaho Street on the south, Bannock on the north, Third Street on the east, and Fourth Street on the west. You recall a rezone of the property to C5DD was before this board and then also went through a couple of hearings before City Council. It was ultimately approved on March 16th by City Council with a development agreement. That development agreement had some parameters around building design. It limited the height of the south tower to 13 stories and the north tower to 11 stories. It restricted access on Bannock Street to a single lane, required special attention be paid to tree mitigation, required a minimum of 100 residential units, and then the north side of the garage shall be given special attention to prevent light pollution. Subsequently, an application was submitted to the Design Review Committee under DRH 21-00144. And the committee approved the application on May 12th with several conditions of approval. One of the most important conditions of approval was that the applicant return to the committee at a public work session. That is an advertised public work session. That is an advertised public hearing, uh, where details regarding the exterior materials, uh, details of the proposed HVAC units, exterior lighting details, including photometrics, a master signage plan, finalized ACHD conditions of approval, including the alley alignment, and any design changes as a result of design development, uh, would be discussed at that work session. Uh, public work sessions are a mechanism that the Design Review Committee uses on a frequent basis. When a application is largely ready for approval, but there are details to be finalized that are going to be the result of additional work and cost by the applicant through their design development phase. The, uh, the committee then requests that that application come back, uh, to a publicly advertised work session. It's much like a public hearing. Uh, the signs go up on the site, the mailings go out, the newspaper notifications are published, and it is held, uh, at a, at a Design Review Committee hearing with input from the public. Um, so that, that is a tactic that they use, uh, often to kind of resolve details of construction on these type of buildings. So on May twelfth, uh, Dan Everhart, representing Better Change for East Downtown, submitted an appeal of that Design Review Committee decision, uh, that was based on three grounds of appeal. The first is that the decision to approve the design application without several details was arbitrary. During their public hearing, the Design Review Committee determined that some pertinent details, uh, for full approval of the project were missing, and they requested that the applicant return to a future public work session uh, with specific details, uh, regarding garage screening and building materials. The committee gave the applicant specific direction about what types of materials would need to be submitted at that work session for consideration. And the publicly advertised work session will give the public and the applicant a chance to present those materials, uh, and any concerns, and, uh, will provide for no violation of due process. Uh, the project will not receive final approval until that public work session takes place, and therefore, the planning team finds that the committee did not issue full approval without all pertinent information. Secondly, the, uh, appellant has, uh, stated that approval of one type of screening on two garage elevations, but not all, was arbitrary. Uh, in their deliberations, the committee determined that in concept, appropriate screening had been provided on all elevations of the garage. Additional information on the vegetative screening proposed on the north elevation seen here in the upper left uh, was requested to ensure that the plant materials will survive and provide an effective screen. On the east elevation in the upper right, uh, the building design uses, um, residential units to cover the garage on the north half of the elevation. On the south half of that east elevation, screening of the garage is provided through a metal mesh, uh, that's in a painted metal frame. Uh, and details of that mesh material and frame are required to be provided at that public work session for review, uh, determine adequacy of that screening. On the west and south elevations, uh, the project does not face significant residential multi-story projects as it does on the north and east. And the committee found that the proposed screening in those locations was adequate as proposed. Uh, it's a combination of some metal mesh screening, some decorative, uh, tubular metal elements, uh, specifically on the south elevation, and then also some areas of plantings on that west elevation. The final stated grounds for appeal, uh, are that approving two layers of screening for some neighbors and one layer for others is inequitable. The applicant's proposal provides screening on all elevations of the parking structure with various strategies employed depending on location. The north elevation uses a vegetative screen wall, while the east, south, and west elevation use a variety of architectural materials, uh, to provide the screening, including the aforementioned steel mesh. Details on the finishes and information on the size of the openings in the mesh were requested to be provided at the public work session for final approval. The information in the record, uh, demonstrates that there are differing conditions and exposures to residential projects on different sides of the project. The Design Review Committee found that appropriate strategies were utilized depending on location to mitigate the impacts of the parking structure and made the finding that impacts had been appropriately addressed. In conclusion, uh, the Design Review Committee gave the applicant specific direction on what specific details would be required for approval at an advertised public work session. The project will not receive final approval without this publicly notor- notified work session, and therefore, the committee did not issue full approval without all pertinent information. The publicly advertised work session will give the applicant and the public an opportunity to weigh in on the final design details, and there was no violation of due process for the applicant or the public. The planning team recommends the commission deny the appeal, uphold the approval of DRH two one dash zero zero one four four as conditioned by the Design Review Committee. And, uh, with that, thank you, and I'd be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, first, we will, will next hear from the appellant, um, which is Dan Everhart. Please start with your name and address for the record. And you'll have up to ten minutes.
Twenty?
Up to ten minutes. We'll start with ten minutes.
Okay. I wrote twenty minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Dan Everhart, and I live at two hundred North Third Street. I'm here to represent Better Change for East Downtown and to express concerns which are mine as an individual and do not reflect the views of the Idaho State Historical Society where I am employed. Better Change for East Downtown was formed by neighbors and residents of East Downtown in May of twenty twenty. These individuals hoped that through participation in the public process, the proposed ICCU tower project could be refined and revised to bring it to more in compliance with the character and quality of our neighborhood. We are an LLC managed by a steering committee composed of owners and renters in apartments, condominiums, and single-family homes in the neighborhood surrounding the proposed project. Our nearly two hundred constituents from across the city include a wide spectrum of experience and interest from professional city planners with decades of expertise to average citizens concerned about the impacts of unchecked growth on their quality of life. You know the circumstances of this project. In fact, this commission unanimously denied the applicant's rezone request nearly a year ago. We know the circumstances of this project. We understand that the Boise City Council narrowly chose to allow the project to move forward. We aren't tilting at windmills. We have a vested and legitimate concern in the changes that impact our neighborhood, our community, and our lives. We aren't asking you, nor did we ask the Design Review Committee to reverse the close zoning decision made by the Boise City Council. Instead, we ask that you require the design review process to proceed forward in a way that is equitable and fair to both the neighbors and the public at large. As we noted in our detailed memorandum, we believe that the decision rendered by the Design Review Committee was at odds with the guidance provided in the downtown design guidelines. We understand that these guidelines are meant to form the foundation of every application under their jurisdiction. The applicant should follow the guidelines, the city staff should analyze for compliance with the guidelines, and the committee should enforce the guidelines. On page two of the guidelines, the document overview states nine overarching goals. Three of these goals illustrate the necessity of preserving and enhancing the context of the surroundings in which a project is developed while maintaining and enhancing property values. The preservation and promotion of neighborhood interests and those of adjoining and adjacent residential and commercial neighbors is paramount. Clearly, concern for neighboring properties and their occupants was important to the Boise City Council, which approved and adopted these guidelines on behalf of the citizens of Boise. Better Change for East Downtown is concerned by two primary aspects of the design review decision. Firstly, at the most basic level, we believe that the committee failed to properly implement the guidelines by approving the applicant's design without the necessary details needed to make an informed decision. Secondly, if we momentarily overlook the flawed process, the outcome of the committee's decision regarding the screening of the garage is at odds with the stipulations of the guidelines. Let's discuss process first. Design review approved a project without fully understanding the design details. The application lacked much of the nuanced information necessary to make a decision. Yes, they presented a general concept. Yes, it was illustrated with high-level aerial views of the project, but details regarding materials, finishes, design, and application were never given. Committee members noted this repeatedly in their deliberations. Nevertheless, they approved the design while stipulating a work session where those details would be presented and approved. How can the design be approved without knowledge of what the design will look like in its application? This concept is mind-blowing to the average citizen. Approval without knowledge of what is approved, this cannot have been the intent of the design review process when it was established. City staff wave away this legitimate concern. They tell you that, quote, "This is a common practice on design review applications," end quote, and that, quote, "The work session will give the applicant and the public an opportunity to weigh in on the final design details," end quote. But at the work session, how will the public eject, object to what is decided by Design Review? We may weigh in, but will this allow us to impact the outcome of the process? May we appeal decisions made at the work session? What about those elements not discussed? Both the city staff and the applicant assure us that this is how many, or even most, large projects are decided. We have no reason to believe this isn't so, but there, but this is a major flaw in the system. If allowed to continue unchecked, Boise citizens stand to lose their ability to participate in any meaningful way. The fact that most projects exclude the public from legitimate participation through the procedural fig leaf of the work session is not something of which to be proud. The Design Review Committee must know what they are approving before they issue their approval. And their approval of a design without fully knowing or understanding the materials and treatments proposed, the committee failed to consider impacts to the sense of place of the proposed ICCU project. How would the committee know and understand the proposal's ability to promote building and site design that fits into the context of the East Downtown neighborhood when it did not know enough about the project's design and material elements to approve them without requiring a subsequent work session at which samples of every element would be required for thorough review and approval? The committee obviously did not understand whether or not the design fits into the context, but arbitrarily approved it anyway, abandoning their mandate and sacrificing the neighbor's ability to know and comprehend impacts of this massive project to the public sphere. Will the project promote design that enhances the sense of place or maintain and enhance property values? Simply put, neither the committee nor the public knows. If we can set aside for a moment the convoluted system in which designs are approved without knowing what they will actually look like, Better Change for East Downtown still has a major concern. The massive parking garage is not adequately or equitably screened on all elevations. The design review guide, I'm sorry, the design guidelines refer to the design of parking structures many times, both obliquely and specifically. It is unlikely that the authors of these guidelines ever considered that a massive six-story parking garage would ever be inserted into a small-scale mixed-use neighborhood like East Downtown. No doubt, they assumed that such, such structures would be built in the central business district three blocks to the west. This does not change the approval granted by the Boise City Council. The council placed other interests ahead of neighborhood cohesion and character. But the city council directed staff and the applicant to ensure that the light, noise, and chemical pollution of the garage was adequately screened for residential neighbors. It's true that the council chose to emphasize screening of impacts to neighbors to the north, but Better Change for East Downtown believes that this was an inadvertent oversight. If called to their attention, wouldn't the mayor and council be equally concerned with the impacts on neighbors to the east, west, and south elevations? We think so. Boiseans live on all four sides of the proposed project. While a few homeowners and renters live to the west and south, the simple fact is that more citizens live within closer proximity to the project's east side than those to the north. And of course, there are people working, recreating, and moving through the streets and sidewalks around the proposed garage who don't live there at all. Regardless, and despite the council's efforts to call out the north elevation, the design guidelines clearly intend to promote the appropriate and equitable screening of parking structures. The guidelines are specific. This is what they say. Chapter one, context and considerations. One point one, applicant considerations in designing a project. What are the surrounding uses and context? Are there distinctive attributes of the neighborhood that should be followed? This could include architectural, landscaping, building, street relationship, signage, and/or special design details. Chapter two, block frontages and urban design framework. Chapter two point two, block frontages, departures. For parking structures within ten feet of the sidewalk, design treatments must be included to the facade and/or landscaping to add continuous visual interest to the pedestrian along the sidewalk and from more distant vantage points. Chapter three, site design elements. Three point three, parking structures and drive-through lanes. The intent to mitigate the impact of parking facilities on the streetscape and pedestrian environment. Three point three point one, parking structure design. Structured parking facilities shall be designed to meet applicable building design provisions in chapter four, including architectural character, massing and articulation, building elements and details, building materials, building lighting, and blank wall treatments. Some flexibility to the massing and articulation standards may be considered via the departure process due to the large floor plates needed for a parking garage, provided the design treatment appropriately fits the context. For example, a parking garage while facing a freeway will warrant greater flexibility and facade articulation than a smaller-scale street with a mix of uses. That's what the guidelines say. The clear intent of the guidelines is to mandate parking structure design, which adds visual interest to a landscaped neighborhood such as East Downtown. When this specific guidance is considered with other chapters specifying project contextualization, the direction to both the committee and the applicant is easily understandable. A parking garage should be screened with elements that add visual interest on all frontages, and impacts on neighboring properties must be reviewed and mitigated. As appropriate, the committee went out of its way to question and consider the suitability of garage screening on the north elevation. However, despite clear direction in the guidelines, no such consideration was shown the exposed parking decks on the east, west, and south elevations of the proposed project.
Thank you. Well, I just two more minutes, please, Victoria, so that you have an opportunity to, to wrap up.
I was told specifically by staff that there would be twenty minutes for this part of the agenda.
The, the code allows for the discretion of the commission on the length, on this length of time to a certain, to a certain degree.
I appeal to you, Madam Chair, to let me speak.
We won't go ten more minutes. I'll go five, five more minutes, so please speak quickly.
Thank you. As appropriate, the committee went out of its way to question and consider the suitability of garage screening on the north elevation. However, despite clear direction in the guidelines, no such consideration was shown the exposed parking decks on the east, west, and south elevations. No questions were asked about visual interest for those viewing the garage structure from more distant vantage points on these elevations. As noted above, this lack of concern could not stem from the committee's clear to, clear understanding of how these other garage elevations would be screened as that detail was not presented in the applicant's materials. In fact, the committee had to specifically request the details and samples of this screening to be presented in a future work session. Despite this lack of clarity, the committee inappropriately approved the application. Let me pause to note that this is about the quality and efficacy of the garage screening. It is not our intention or suggestion that all four elevations look the same, but rather that they all function to similarly screen noise, light, and chemical pollution. Finally, let's address chapter four, which is building design, and I ask you to consider this language specifically in light of the parking garage. The purpose of this chapter, building design, is to, quote, "Provide guidance and parameters for the design of buildings in downtown Boise that meet the following objectives: design buildings that respond to the unique context of the site, design buildings that address the street and create a pedestrian-friendly environment, demonstrate respect for historic structures, and contribute to the overall sense of identity downtown Boise. Architectural character, the intent, section four point one, to promote building design that responds uniquely to the site's context to demonstrate respect for surrounding historic structures." The desired approach for infill development is to design buildings that respond uniquely to its context. For sites adjacent to historical structures, the building design must demonstrate respect for such resources being, via building, massing, facade articulation, ground floor design, et cetera, et cetera. While the city council has allowed ICCU to construct a modern high-rise within a neighborhood composed of historic one- and two-story buildings, the council did not waive the developer's requirement to fit their project into the unique context of the neighborhood. Careful selection of building materials, robust screening of all elevations of the parking structure, and attention to detail are still expected. The Design Review Committee should ensure compliance with the stipulation, but failed to enforce the city's expectation. Another objective of, of this chapter mandates respect for surrounding historic structures. All four elevations of the ICCU tower are faced by properties which are either listed in or eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places of Parent. Of paramount concern is the Historic U.S. Assay Office, which is a national historic landmark, one of only three in the state of Idaho. Other adjacent sites are eligible for, but not yet listed in the National Register. In requiring that new projects demonstrate respect for surrounding historic structures, the guidelines make it clear that both materials and design be reviewed in consideration of adjacent properties which meet this criterion. In light of the guidance specified by the Downtown Design Guidelines Goals and Standards, it is obvious that the Boise Design Review Committee erred in their decision regarding ICCU's development. The committee's decision to approve the design application without several crucial details of materials and their application was arbitrary and in violation of the guidelines, which mandate a design that fits into the context of its surroundings. Specifically, detailed scrutiny and approval of one type of garage screening on one elevation, but not all, was arbitrary and inequitable. Chapter three of the guidelines clearly require mitigation of the impact of parking facilities on the streetscape and pedestrian environment. To provide this mitigation on the north elevation, but not the south, east, and west, is a misapplication of the guidelines and necessitates review and revision. As noted in detail above, the guidelines require a careful review of proposed applications and the details of these designs. The ICCU application lacked this detail, to the point the committee was forced to require a work session in which the applicant would provide material samples and clarify their design intent. Without this clarity, the committee would lack the knowledge necessary to confirm that the proposed design met the guidance specified by the Downtown Design Guidelines Goals and Standards, and yet, without this knowledge, the committee approved the design, a failure of both the public and their own mandate. The Idaho Central Credit Union Project is enormous. It is precedent-setting. It will forever alter the Boise skyline and the East Downtown neighborhood. And such impacts should receive more scrutiny by the Design Review Committee in direct correlation to the level of change the proposal represents. And yet, they waived their review. Better Change for East Downtown requests that the Planning and Zoning Commission correct this mistake by the Boise Design Review Committee and require a careful
Thank you.
process, which is equitable and keeping with the city of Boise's guidance.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the applicant, which is Mr. Wardle, who I see online here. Mr. Wardle, you also get 15 minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm, I'm not going to waste your time tonight.
Please start with your name and address. Sorry. Yes, and then go ahead, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jeffrey Wardle, 251 East Front, Boise. I'm counsel for the applicant, and I'm not going to waste your time tonight. You have many other more pressing things to consider. We are totally in agreement with the staff report that you received and staff's assessment and evaluation. I understand that these issues may be difficult to understand to the layperson who is unsophisticated. Mr. Everhart is neither a layperson nor unsophisticated. It is disconcerting that we are wasting time relitigating issues that the city council addressed and told us to go implement. So why are we here? We are here because, for all intents and purposes, the appellant has appealed an interim decision of the Design Review Committee, which is common and customary and has been the historic practice for significant material projects in the city of Boise. As set forth in our, our memorandum, we highlight the fact that this use of work sessions is common, that use of work sessions regularly is done for applicants to take back information that the Design Review Committee wants us to incorporate and address and move forward. It's an interim step that has been used on a variety of projects, including a variety of applications resulting in the construction of parking garages in downtown Boise by my clients. This was the case at City Center. This was the case at Eighth and Main. This was the case at Pioneer Cross. So the process that design review followed and that your Design Review Committee implemented has been consistent for many years. Now, the Design Review Guidelines are clear. They give guidance and direction as to what should be done. They give guidance and direction as to how parking structures should be screened. There is no provision in the Design Review Guidelines that would have you require the level of opacity, the level of preclusion to the outside, and 100% screening on parking structures. In fact, the examples that are offered in the Design Review Guidelines clearly identify the opposite. And unfortunately, Mr. Everhart and his colleagues focus on the northern elevation where, yes, the city council requested that we add certain green screening to that metal screen, ignoring the fact that a variety of screening types have been utilized throughout the project on each of the different facades. On the east elevation, housing provides significant screening, as does metal panels and concrete panels, which are significant and substantial. On the south and west side, those, those concrete panels continue providing visual screening to vehicles that are inside the garage and the screening of the elements descending from the ceiling above. They also include, as staff indicated, different uses of metal, metal fins, metal panels, modulation and setback to address them. And then obviously, there's the north elevation. So what do they want? Well, it appears they want us to go back to design review, which is what design review requires us to do. To the extent that we've objected about process and procedure, I would posit to you that our objection doesn't have anything to do with our approval. It has to do with the nature of this appeal. And as we go forward with design review considerations and an updated zoning code, time should be taken to address how best to deal with the issues presented here. What is the process for an appeal? Who is responsible for posting the site? Who is responsible and constrained as the time that they have? Those are the due process concerns that we need to address. I strenuously disagree with the assessment that we presented an application that was inadequate. In fact, the application that we provided was detailed. It was detailed and consistent with other design review applications that have been reviewed and approved in this city. Is it common for design review to schedule a work session and request that you come back with additional materials and details? Yes. And why is that? Because on a project this complex, there will be material changes to the project as we go through the design process. Committee members of all noted that and asked that as we come back, that we come back with additional detail addressing some of the surfaces and other things that they wanted to see in more detail. When we look at what is required under the Boise City Code and the Design Review Guidelines, the neighbors would have you read into those guidelines and into that code standards that do not exist. The standard related to materials have to do with how they look, how they will endure, how they interact with each other, that they provide a degree of, of variation. They don't require us to come forward at the application stage with samples from vendors, samples that we may modify, knowing that we will get direction for what the commission wants. We will be back to design review. We will be back to design review as early as November. We'll be back to design review with a modified design implementing some of the elements that they've identified, including an increase in the amount of residential units that will provide further screening to the neighboring property owners. There is nothing that has been identified tonight or in the prior submittals that would evidence any error that has to be rectified. In fact, as you just heard, it is a process that Mr. Everhart disputes, but it's the process the city of Boise has elected to pursue. There is no reason to grant this appeal because it was not a final approval. It was a final approval, giving us direction on certain elements they wanted us to see, but we can't go pull a building permit. We can't go initiate construction and vertical, the vertical elements of the building until we have design review approval. This is a process that I'm accustomed to, that my sophisticated clients are accustomed to, that our design team is accustomed to. As such, we'll be back hopefully in six weeks in front of the Design Review Committee, identifying the changes that we made to implement the direction that they gave us. This is the process. Nothing that has been articulated tonight merits this appeal. And in fact, this appeal is as frivolous as it comes in light of the fact that we still have to go back for a work session. Will we be back in front of you with an appeal from that work session? We don't know. But this is the process that has been followed, and it would be arbitrary and capricious to adopt and accept the arguments you've heard tonight from the appellant. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wardle. Next, before we get to questions, I'll just check to see if we have a representative from the Downtown Neighborhood Association to speak on this item. Okay, seeing, seeing that nobody is here for the Downtown Neighborhood Association, we will move next to questions from the commission.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
First of all, I have a question for Mr. Everhart. Is it heart or hard? Your last name, is it with a D or T?
It's a T.
It's a T.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ever, I presume you were at the design review meeting where this happened. Did they have a good, robust discussion of all the issues that you've raised, particularly the garage screening at that hearing? Like, did they talk about it for 10, 15, 20 minutes or longer?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, I do think that they had a robust discussion of the north elevation screening. They were very particular about whether or not the Virginia Creeper was going to die, and so they actually asked for additional screening of, of coniferous plantings. They had no, as far as I can recall, they had no robust consideration for the east, the west, or the south elevations, which is the point of the appeal in part.
Right. Thank you. So I have a question.
Commissioner Gillespie.
I have a question for Josh. So Josh.
Please stay close by because we're still in the question. Thank you.
At this, first of all, when is this, this work session?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, whenever they request it, they would have to meet the Design Review Committee cutoff, which is the first Tuesday of every month for a hearing the following Wednesday.
So it has not, it has not been scheduled yet.
It has not. It was at the applicant's request.
So at that work session, will the members of the committee actually vote for a final approval or this procedurally, what, how does that happen?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, correct. They will act finally on the application in regards to those very specific items that were detailed for return to a work session, those, those bullet points in the approval letter.
Okay. Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So this is a question, Bob, you may know this, or my architecture friends, but I'll ask it to Josh and maybe to the applicant, Mr. Wardle. You know, roughly how many items, like individual pieces of material are on the exterior of a major building like this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, easily a dozen, potentially more.
Right. Mr. Wardle?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Gillespie, that's probably a fair assessment. Yeah, probably a dozen or more.
Right. So, so Josh, is it your understanding that because there's just so many that this work session happens like this because the DRC identifies the things it really wants to see and then calls those out specifically? Is that sort of what's happening here?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, I believe that's an accurate assessment, yes.
Is it, Madam Chairman?
Commissioner.
Is it the case, Josh, that the DRC frequently or almost always approves large projects without having viewed a sample of every piece of exterior? I don't even know the componentry.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, that kind of varies on a very simple suburban building that maybe has stucco and cultured stone that the committee is very familiar with. They would probably approve that in one hearing without seeing physical samples. An extremely complex, multi-story downtown building with potentially a dozen different materials, it would be very common to have to have further details submitted on a project like that.
Right. Thank you very much.
Manager.
Commissioner Moore. So following up on a question for staff, following up on those material samples, how specific is that really? And well, I guess two questions. So first of all, is it a requirement of the application? And then for these material sample or these physical samples, how specific is that really? Is that down to manufacturer and color, or is it a little bit more generalized?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, in the digital age of applications we're in these days, you know, it used to be that we got a four-foot by four-foot piece of foam board with bricks glued to it that then fell off, right? And we're all over the place. There is not a requirement to submit a physical material board. They did submit a material board with their application that depicted the materials that they had proposed. In terms of specificity, we would hold them to a, we would hold them to a manufacturer. It would be a similar color, texture, and material type.
Manager. Commissioner Moore.
So at these, at these work sessions, they kind of come in with a basis of design, essentially with a general color and kind of a feel or a material itself, but not necessarily the final product.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, they would typically bring an actual manufacturer sample, but if that manufacturer changed and that material stayed the same, you know, it would comply with the approval.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I have procedural question. I want to play choose your adventure here because I need to be clear in my own mind here. We are being asked to deny the appeal and hold the, the Design Review Committee's decision, which will then result in an upcoming yet-to-be-determined work session. Let's say we do that. The applicant, in this case, who is requesting the overturning of the decision, does or does not have the right to appeal this decision to city council.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley, this decision tonight is appealable to city council.
That's part one. Part two is if we were to grant the overturning of the Design Review Committee, then it goes back to design review again, correct? In which case, assuming some of the decisions that are being discussed here would be kicked around to a greater extent and more dialogue and the robust discussion that Commissioner Gillespie was asking about is to be had. Is that accurate? I want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley, that could go a couple of ways.
Sure.
If you took that action tonight, the applicant could appeal to city council, which is a likely outcome. If they chose the, to not appeal, the application would be denied, and they would be required to resubmit to the Design Review Committee, thus ending up a Design Review Committee again.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Question for Josh, a couple of questions for Josh. Josh, what percentage of projects receive a work session?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, on a project of this size in the downtown core, nearly 100%. It would be highly unusual for a project like this to go through, say, one Design Review Committee hearing. You know, there may be circumstances where instead of a work session, it's deferred a month, but the end result is the same, that the applicant comes back before them with better material samples and details.
When you're, if I understand your statement correctly, then it's, it's a bit of a sense of scale and importance of the project that receives the work session, like your average smaller development doesn't necessarily receive a work session, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, I think that's fair. Very, for instance, small 3,000 square foot, you know, pad site in West Boise just isn't the level of complexity that a project like this is.
Sure. Okay, very good. And then you mentioned several things that the applicant is working through with the conditional DR approval they have currently. You mentioned ACHD conditions, some things that they're waiting on, it sounds like, essentially. The other thing, one other thing you mentioned was a photometric plan, which in my experience is pretty normal to provide a photometric plan for the site. Do you know, in this case, are they looking at a photometric plan to study the amount of light coming from the parking garage?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Mark.
I have some additional questions in the meantime. So for the screening requirements, and there's the argument that the screening is on the different sides is inequitable. But what is the actual, I guess, the actual requirement for screening in the Downtown Design Review Guidelines?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, so the Design Review Guidelines are not prescriptive in terms of garage screening. What they do require is that structured parking facility shall be designed to meet applicable building provisions in chapter four, including architectural character, massing and articulation, building elements and details, building materials, building lighting, and blank wall treatments, essentially leaving the door open for design interpretations. It's just that.
essentially leaving the door open for design interpretations. It's just that the parking garage does not have a flat, blank wall with no design interest. You know, those objectives in the design guidelines can be accomplished through a number of measures.
Manager. Commissioner Moore.
So there's no real requirement for screening to continue on multiple sides or anything like that? That's kind of up to the designer to interpret screening on each side.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, that's correct, yeah.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
One last sort of procedural question, and so Josh, you might perk up on this one, but also James and the fellow behind me, whose name escapes me. I'm really sorry.
Ty.
Ty. So assuming, let us, assuming we deny the appellant's request tonight and that it's some if and when DRC ever issues sort of its final approval, I presume the appellant would still have a right to appeal that final approval. I sure hope so, or is there some like absolute bar in the code against appealing like the same thing twice? Because we're kind of in this limbo that we're going to sort of get two votes out of the DRC. I'm not super wild about that, but I have to find a way to sort of fit it in. So is there, is there an absolute bar on him or anybody filing a second appeal after the DRC vote?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, that work session decision is an appealable decision.
Thank you.
We would ask that it be limited to the specific items discussed at that work session.
Thank you.
Okay, any last questions from the commission? Okay, with that, then we will move on to public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify, please virtually raise your hand now so we can see that queue. And if you are, we have one person signed up that we'll start with, and then if you are also here in person to testify, stay alert. So first we'll hear from Keith Gaines. And is there anybody else here that would like to testify on this item tonight? Yeah, please come right on up to the front here so we can kind of queue up, keep things moving along. Please start with your name and address, Mr. Gaines, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Keith Gaines and I live at 200 North Third Street. Please grant this appeal and overturn the approval of the design review committee. According to the Boise City Planning Team, they recommend this appeal be denied since the committee did not actually issue full approval. They said approval was conditioned on a subsequent work session to review additional details. They said this is a common practice on design review applications, but that does not make it right. This is a flawed process. The design review committee should have deferred the decision until all required information was provided by the applicant. The planning teams said there was no violation of due process for the public. This appeal of the conditional approval by the design review committee is the due process to the public. The planning team's argument that this appeal be denied because the project approval was conditioned is circular. The project does not receive final approval until a subsequent work session, however, the public has no right to appeal the full approval by the design review committee granted at a public work session. The public can only appeal some aspects of the design review committee's decision after the public work session. This is in fact a violation of due process to the public. Case in point, the design review committee already made the finding that appropriate strategies were utilized to mitigate the impacts of the parking structure. Further details regarding steel mesh, including finishes and information on the size of the openings in the mesh, were requested to be provided at the public work session for final approval. How can it be determined that the utilization of materials will appropriately mitigate the impacts of the parking structure when the necessary details about the materials were not provided? Please overturn the approval by the design review committee and defer any decision until all required information is provided by the applicant. I'd also like to point out again that the city council specifically in the development agreement did call out the north elevation. We do think it's inequitable to just pay attention to that one elevation. We do not think it was city council's intent to only focus on one elevation of the parking structure.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Great, let's move to the, we have one more person in-house here before we move to the online testimony. Please start again, please start with your name and address and again, three minutes.
My name is Cindy Schafield and I live at 200 North Third Street. I'm here today to express my concerns about the BVA building. We're here to talk about a design that has been approved, but no one has seen the plans. The city approved the building trusting that BVA would do the right thing. We have yet to see any proposal, so how do we as a community approve it? BCED was told that they could be part of the design process. So far, this has not happened. We are talking about designs as a community to approve them, but we haven't seen any plans. The city says they want to be carbon neutral by 2050. What in the plan have they put in place? How are they going to facilitate this? This is a brand new building. We have seen nothing to go with what the city wants. Unfortunately, above ground parking has already been approved, but what about light pollution? What are they going to do to mitigate this and improve on this? Can they dim the lights? Can they have motion sensors? We don't know. We haven't been asked to be part of the process. BVA said they would screen one wall, but what about the neighbors on the other sites? Currently, there are at least 30 residents of the Imperial Plaza that have nothing screened and eight residents towards the Jefferson that have screening. So let's screen all the sides. If we have live plants and we don't know because we haven't been part of the process, who's keeping the plants alive? Who's keeping them to look good? Who enforces it and are there fines? Again, we're talking about design review, but we have not been invited to the table. We are asking what materials are they using? What's the quality of the materials? What are the colors? You are asking us as a community to be involved, but yet it's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so nobody else in chambers that would like to testify on this item. We will move online to Mr. Snyder. Mr. Snyder, please go ahead and unmute when you're ready and start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Robert Snyder. I live at 200 North Third at the Imperial Plaza. I'd like to thank you for your service to the city of Boise and your wise decision previously to deny the initial application by BVA, Idaho Central Credit Union. I acknowledge the main structure of the proposed building has been approved by the mayor, but there is a lot to be done concerning the appearance and functionality of the building. In addition to that, there are a lot of concerns that I have with what has been done and what BVA has done with other buildings. I wrote to BVA on July 14th with several questions and the major item wondering, where can I see similar structures to this proposed building that were in a historic residential office area? I did not receive any response from them. In looking at the BVA website, all of the projects are located in areas bounded by major high-speed arterials, for instance, Eagleview Landing adjacent to I-84, 10 Mile Crossing adjacent to I-84 and 10 Mile, Central Valley Plaza, Chindon and Highway 16, and Pioneer Crossing, and many others. What will this development look like? Where can we see similar buildings that BVA and Idaho Central Credit Union has done? One of the major concerns is screening of the parking garage. I think this has been covered extensively. The project was approved with no underground parking, so substantial money was saved at the expense of the surrounding neighbors like the Jefferson and the Imperial Plaza. The only parking garage I have found constructed by BVA is the Pioneer Crossing with very limited screening for light pollution and car movement. Another parking garage was constructed behind the Home Two Hotels. I encourage you to take a look at that in the evening and see what limited screening does. This is a great opportunity for BVA, Idaho Central Credit Union, to create an attractive screen that blocks the garage light pollution and blends in with the neighborhood. I commend and support the presentation of Better Change East Boise. I would hope that BVA ICCU would reach out with the neighbors, come to the table, be on the legally mandated meetings they have had. I have reached out and several of the adjoining neighbors have reached out to be a part of this development, and that has not happened. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Last call for testimony on this item. I don't see any other hands up. Okay, with that, we will move to rebuttal. We'll start with with the applicant, Mr. Wardell. Please go ahead. I'll start again with your name just for the record and you'll have five minutes.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, I'm not going to belabor the point. I think staff has identified the issues and I think your questions are focused correctly on these, on these issues. This is a circular, a circular situation of the creation of Mr. Everard and his group. And the reality is, we still have to make a submittal. We still have to go back. This is the process that has always been followed. In fact, the Design Review Commission committee gave us direction on certain materials and treatments that they wanted to see, that we will be coming back to show that we listened to them and we modified the application as they directed. So with that, it is unnecessary to grant this application because the, I mean, it's unnecessary to grant the appeal because the issues that they've sought to appeal are the issues that we have been directed to come back and address at design review. Again, this is not the best use of your time and I stand for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move to hear from the appellant for rebuttal. You'll have five minutes, Mr. Everhart. Please start again with your name for the record.
Yes, my name's Dan Everhart. I live at 200 North Third Street in Boise. There's obviously some confusion here. Confusion on the part of the public, confusion on the part of the staff. The only one who seems sure of himself is Mr. Wardle. I guess that's why he gets paid to do this. That's okay. The confusion is a sign that this process does not operate correctly. Now, it may not be your job tonight to decide how the process should operate correctly, but you are being informed that the process doesn't operate correctly. The simple fact that no one else appeals design review decisions doesn't mean that the process is working correctly. It just means that people aren't as interested in those projects, probably because they don't live within less than half a block from a parking garage developed to look like the central business district and not for their quasi-residential neighborhood. So it's difficult to stand in front of you and ask you to change the entire way that the city operates design review. Clearly, they've been operating design review like this for a long time. I don't think that gives them credibility. I think it simply speaks to the fact that there hasn't been a robust public process. Here we have a chance to investigate how this process works, and I would argue it doesn't work. It's confusing. It's convoluted. The fact that you give approval to a project, but you don't know what you're approving, so you say, don't worry. In order to know what we're approving, we'll have you come back and get more approvals. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to the public. And I think it defeats the concept of this sort of straightforward public process. Now, the staff has said and have responded to questions that there will be an opportunity to appeal. They've also said very carefully that those appeals of the future work session can only be made on elements that are reviewed and discussed at that meeting. So if there are things that are concerning, but the commission doesn't bring them up, will the public be allowed to appeal those things? I think Commissioner Gillespie thinks that's true. I hope he's right because there seems to be a lot of confusion on the process. Again, nobody appeals these decisions. Why? Because they're hard. It's a confusing process and they're usually in the central business district. But that's not the case here, of course. It's in a residential neighborhood. So let's just set aside the process. I'm asking you to consider yourself for yourself the process because it's difficult, which I don't, I'm not expecting you to make sweeping changes. But you may review the question of the parking garage screening in relation to the design guidelines, which are clearly outlined. They must appropriately screen their parking structure. They must do so in consideration of the context, the historic buildings that surround the site, the neighbors and adjacent property owners' views, both close and far. But they didn't do that, and the design review committee did not require that of them. That's why we're asking you. Can you mandate that the design review committee reconsider their decision about parking garage screening? Yes, you can do that. That's what's before you today. So process, of course, I'd love to see this process made simpler and more easily understood. But if you were to set aside process, which I hope you don't, consider the actual impacts of the parking garage screening, which the designer view committee seemed to wave in favor of an almost blinkered, blinded view of one elevation, and that's the north elevation. They don't know what's going to be on the other elevations because they haven't seen it yet. But don't worry, they'll see it later and then somebody can talk about it. I know you're tired of hearing about this. Believe me, I'm tired of thinking about it, so I'll be done now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Everhart. With that, we will close the hearing and render a decision.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Before we do, I'd just like to get on the record just the the nature, if there were another appeal, would it be an open record or would the record have to be confined to simply the discussion of the work session? And I've been wrong on this before recently, so I would just like the legal folks to, because the appellate rules are complicated in the code. So if there is an appeal of this again later, is it an open record?
Great, I see Mr. Smith just popped up on our screens here.
Madam Chair.
Please go ahead, Mr. Smith.
For the record, James Smith, Deputy City Attorney. Off of Commissioner Gillespie's question there, I think it's important to clarify a bit of procedure here, especially where the city code may not provide specific guidance that explains every single situation. And what we have here is a situation where someone has claimed that there was a decision of designer review committee and that decision, to the extent that anything was decided so far, has been appealed. And as city staff has indicated, the city's view is that whatever has been decided to date by the committee is subject to appeal and subject to your review now and that anything further to be decided could be a subject of a more limited appeal. And so to Commissioner Gillespie's question, no, there are not two bites at the apple in the sense that the entire design review committee decision, the entire approval from design review can be appealed twice simply because that committee bifurcated its decision to reserve a small piece of it to review at a later work session. That's not the way it would work. So just want this body to have some confidence that at least in the city's view, these issues should not come before you twice.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So this question for James, but so if the appellant took this decision to the city council, would that be an open record?
Commissioner Gillespie and Madam Chair, no, it would not. That's subject to a more limited scope of review where council can only reverse or modify upon a finding of specific types of error.
Right, okay, thank you. Right. Okay, thank you.
So I'm open for a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
I move that we deny DRH twenty-one dash one forty-four for the reasons stated in the staff report to deny the appeal. A second.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Gillespie, would you like to start the conversation?
Madam Chairman, I mean, I simply think that, you know, we have lots of testimony that Design Review worked really hard on this, spent a lot of time discussing it, all the issues. I, you know, don't I I don't think there is any big defect in the process. I'm not wild about the process, but I think there's an opportunity to remedy it at a later date. If it's necessary to do so. So I think there's plenty of opportunity for the appellant to, you know, make his case both in some limited sense to this commission, but also to the City Council. And, you know, they've raised certain issues, and I think they're going to get a fair hearing on this on the substance of the issues. I just think that it's up to DRC to interpret those guidelines. They did so. They clearly thought about it very carefully. They asked for more information. That seems like what they normally do. So I think at this point, the correct course of action is to step back and let this procedure play out at the DRC as they normally would.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Madam Chair, obviously, I'll be supporting the motion. I agree with Commissioner Gillespie's statements. You know, there's nothing to say. You know, the the design team and the applicant are working through design details, and they're going to return back to the Design Review Board with with answers to questions that were posed by the Design Review Board, and that's the process. And I think that, as Commissioner Gillespie said, they need to let that we let that process play out. There's no guarantee that the Design Review Board is going to like what they present. And given approval, they may send them back again and say, nope, that's not right. You need to work on that a little bit more. So, you know, we're playing we're playing out a process that we don't know. You know what's going to be presented. So I think we have to let that play out. You know, and as the substance of the issues, you know, there's nothing in the design guidelines that say the garage screening has to check these boxes, and it'll have to be the same style of screening. Uh, I think that the design guidelines are just that. They're guidelines. Their purpose, they're subjective to a point to allow the design team and the developer to make decisions, uh, to present a building that is that looks aesthetically pleasing and functions well without a lot of heavy-handed input from our design guidelines. And I think that that's the appropriate way to do things. Otherwise, we end up with rubber stamped same designs everywhere we everywhere we go throughout town. I don't think that's what we want here in the city. And then my only final comment would be, um, I think it's disingenuous by the appellant to claim that there are no details in the plans. I'm looking at material boards right now. There are elevations. There are materials. Uh, so I think we had some testimony from several folks and from the appellant. It said the plans don't exist. Well, plans do exist, and there are materials here. So I think we have to have a little bit of trust in the process and let it play out and let the design team and developer fine tune those details and present additional information in the future. Um, so with that, I'll be supporting the motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I will be supporting the motions that was made and a couple of things I want to just add to the discussion. One, we're sort of being asked to undo something of another committees, and I think with Commissioner Gillespie's points being made, I don't I don't so know that there's grounds to do that. Having said that, Mr. Everhart is Everhart, right? Am I getting it right? Oh, gosh, I'm sorry if I wrong. I actually am going to encourage you to do something, and I hope that you take me up on it. I think you're a pretty eloquent speaker. You've done your research clearly, and I and I think that you've done a pretty good job tonight. What I'd love to see is go to the next step, come back, appeal it, because I think what you your strength would be would be to inspire counsel. I think if you showed them a lot of the images that you think and and the folks that you're working with in the East End have, you know, as ideal, I think would make some changes because you know what? This is just the beginning. This building is only the beginning of many more to come, and it's going to be all over the downtown area. This is the most valuable piece of real estate in our state just about. And we have a growth spurt, and it's only going to continue. So if you can inspire counsel to make changes with Design Review Committee, I hope that you can do that because I think you're capable of it, and I'd love to see it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Blanchard.
I would just say that, well, one toward the motion, I will be supporting it, and I just because there there's no remedy in in granting this appeal. The remedy is the process that is working, and uh, that I don't see this as a broken process at all. I mean, we've all seen this thing now multiple times. DR has, we have, council has. And uh, there's significantly less confusion on this issue. Now, there's only three or four people here talking about this issue now. When this process started, uh, we were overwhelmed with opposition towards it. So I think this is testament to a process that has worked and a development team that has done a good job. And our staff and commissions that have done a good job to bring this thing to where it is. So I think, yeah, anything but a broken process. This is a process that has absolutely worked and created a lot less confusion.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, and we have a motion on the table to deny um, the appeal of Design Review Committee's approval for item number one. This is DRH twenty-one dash one four four um, at two hundred North Fourth Street. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Stand.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Squires.
Hi.
Blanchard.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Gillespie.
Hi.
Ben Brock.
Hi.
Danley.
Hi.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll be back at about, uh, seven twenty-seven. CUP twenty-one dash thirty-nine for Columbia West LLC deferred from August ninth, twenty twenty-one at fifty-two hundred East Grand Forest Drive. A modification to previously approved conditional use permit to expand outdoor storage. And uh, we will start, please, with staff, Mr. Walden, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Brandon Whalen with the current Planning Department, here to present conditional use permit CUP twenty-one dash zero 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 three nine submitted on behalf of Columbia West Outdoor Storage, located at fifty-two hundred East Grand Forest Drive. The application is to modify a previously approved conditional use permit to expand an outdoor storage facility on two point two acres of area located within a C four D zone. The C four D zone is shown in red here on the left, and on the right, you can see the outline of the existing facility as well as the two point two acres that they proposed to incorporate into their operations. The existing facilities have been in operation since nineteen ninety-nine. The site plan submitted shows the two point two acre expansion will be for open surface storage. To provide for reasonable screening of this new phase, the planning staff recommends the following conditions of approval. Number one, a six-foot vinyl fence on the north and east property lines. Two, create a ten-foot wide landscape strip on the north property line with ground covers, shrubs, and at least eight trees. Three, create a ten-foot wide landscape strip on the eastern property line, again, with ground covers, shrubs, and at least ten trees consisting of at least two different species. And lastly, to enhance the existing landscaping on the original portion of the project that is on Grand Forest and Highway twenty-one frontages. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-one dash zero 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 three nine with the facts, findings, and conditions of approval that are contained within the staff report. And with that, I would stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Um, next we'll hear from the applicant, Columbia West Village. Please, please start with your name and address, and you'll have ten minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Peter Rockwell. I live at six six four East Parkway Court in Boise. And generally, in agreement with the staff's recommendations, we'd hope to be on the consent agenda, but we've got somebody here that is like to speak on it, so we are not. But uh, since I guess I got some time here, I just wanted to point out that uh, we did have our neighborhood meeting, and we got some recommendations from the neighbors. And we implemented those into the plans and, uh, contrary to those desires, two of the recommendations from staff are contrary to those requests from the neighbors. So but um, other than that, I mean, we're fine with the recommendation. So.
Thank you.
For any questions.
Thank you. Before we get to questions, I'll just do a call to see if we have a representative from the Neighborhood Association. This is the Southeast Neighborhood Association. Um, and it appears we do not. Um, so we will, at this point, move on to questions from the commission first after the applicant.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
See who am I talking to? Brandon. For hi, um, could you pull up the the satellite picture that is in our package? I believe it's you have packet page seven. There you go. So can you point to the east property line, that that one right there? Um, am I correct in seeing that we're not requiring any landscaping or like a ten-foot landscape buffer and uh, any sort of fence? There's fencing required, but no landscape buffer. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, that no, we have asked for a ten-foot wide landscape strip on that eastern property line with uh, ground covers, shrubs, and a minimum of ten trees.
I'm having trouble getting my east and west right here. So this what? Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Brandon, is that not represented in the drawings that are in our packet?
Yes.
Yes, it's not, or yes, it is.
Yes, that should be included in your.
Okay, okay. So Brandon, I'm on packet page seven fifty-five. And I see landscaping, but I'm having trouble because of the orient. It's it's kind of I'm not understanding that. It looks to me like the landscaping is shown on the south and the north, and there's nothing on the east.
Right. On the plans that are submitted. And so Madam Chair, member, Chairman, or Madam Chair, Council, Council.
Chairman. Boss.
But you, you are the commissioner. I am, but you're in the commissioner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gillespie. Uh, on this plan shown, uh, we are requesting that they have a ten-foot landscape strip on the north property line and the east property line. And that will include a six-foot vinyl fence, and then the ground covers, shrubs, and a minimum of eight trees on the north property line and a minimum of ten trees on that eastern property line.
Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
And what's on the southern property line then?
On the southern.
The because that's like the rim, right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, the application submitted was for a vinyl fence on that southern property line or along the Highway twenty-one frontage. And a condition that is also included in the packet is that they included the CMU block wall that is the original facility be extended on that south property line. So it will be a masonry block on the Highway twenty-one frontage.
Okay.
Great.
I see it now, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner.
So just so I'm clear, so what you said is reflected in site-specific conditions, three and four and five. But it isn't reflected in the drawing. So ignore the man in the drawings.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions from the commission, we'll move to a public testimony. Um, and I will start with our sign up here, Mr. Collander. Please start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
It looks like I've got thirty minutes of material. I don't, I promise. Tim Calendar, I live at five four five nine East Philly Room Court, which is the neighborhood Commissioner Gillespie that borders that east side. Yeah. So first of all, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I know that a lot of you would probably be watching the Raiders game or hanging out with your family or doing anything else on a Monday night. So I will be very brief. Uh, by way of background, uh, many years ago, I was an assistant city attorney. My first job at law school was at this uh, very building, and then I went into private practice, spent a lot of years as a litigator arguing, running around in conflict. I have no desire to be in conflict with the developer, uh, Mr. Rockwell or anyone else. I believe in partnership, and I believe in people coming together and finding solutions that are sustainable, especially when we think about being neighbors. Uh, I I'm I'm not going anywhere, and I'm sure he's not. And so I think it's great for us to just spend time together and figure out something that works. Uh, I know that standing in the way of development is similar to pushing a rope uphill, as my dad taught me, a cattle rancher from Cascade, Idaho, is full of very strange metaphors. Uh, so again, as I said, instead, I want to come together, and I believe it's Mr. Rockwell. I apologize if I got the name incorrect. Uh, work together with the commission through the legal avenues as well as just, again, create the partnership on someone that unfortunately I haven't met. Regarding the public hearing that took place earlier, I was unfortunately out of town. I travel a lot for work. I've gotten away from the litigation game. I was in Boston. Uh, I have polled my neighbors. I live in a neighborhood of fifteen houses. Uh, and I would actually stand contrary to what Mr. Rockwell represented. There is nobody in my neighborhood that does not want landscaping on the east. And in fact, uh, there's high concern of light pollution, high concern of what I would call an attractive nuisance. If you were to go to the easternmost border of the uh, you the storage facility as it exists today, uh, you can look over it while standing on public property, not trespassing. I did today. And you will see, I saw chemicals, I saw an old broken down car. I saw things that my six-year-old son, if that were backed up to our neighborhood fence, would easily find interesting and could very easily climb over the fence and get hurt. Uh, I wrote down here sixteen houses, seventeen kids, eight of them under ten, nine under the age of eighteen. Uh, again, if I were Mr. Rockwell, I would be very concerned about the attractive nuisance doctrine and making sure that whatever it is that's parked up against our neighborhood fence is not promoting liability on him, the developers, the other landowners, as they put things that, again, might entice a child to climb over a six-foot fence with no landscaping. Primary concerns, again, landscaping, our neighbors, we want to be good partners. We want to be good neighbors. And again, standing in the way of development is like pushing a rope uphill. I understand that. But I do believe there are opportunities here to make sure that from our second floors, we don't look down on broken down cars. We don't look down on stacks of tires. We don't see our property values deplete greatly. Uh, this is a desirable neighborhood along Highway twenty-one. Anyone driving to Lucky Peak is driven by my house, uh, the Oregon Trail. It's a place that a house in our neighborhood went on went up for sale about a week ago, sold in a day. So a lot to say, I know I have limited time, and I want to respect that there's other items on here. Um, we would just, I I stand in opposition, not necessarily to stomp my feet and jump around.
Time.
But as I look at the current proposal, I have concerns. So thank you.
Um, okay, is there anybody else that would like to testify on this item tonight? Please virtually use your hand or come on up. Okay, with that, um, we will welcome a rebuttal from the applicant. If you'd like to, you'd have five minutes. Please start again with your name just for the record.
Start with my name again.
Please.
Peter Rockwell.
Thank you.
Uh, only thing I have to add is that, um, actually, we were involved with this thing about twenty years ago when it when it got started, but, um, some of the things that, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't remember your name. Callahan. Mentioned about, uh, interesting objects over the fence and stuff like that are things that are going to be fixed with this. That's been a vacant lot for the whole time. It's sometimes been play area for kids riding bikes. The owners of it have asked people to not do that. Um, there is a pathway that's part of this property that the neighbors have enjoyed, and that will be extended. The original CUP many years ago was for the whole piece of property, and we reduced it in half because they could only build afford to build half at the time. So I think it's an appropriate use and expansion and with, uh, the recommendations that staff has with the landscaping on the east side and on the north, which the north would be extended anyway. That it's a good, uh, good use and request your approval.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and the items before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Move to approve CUP twenty-one dash thirty-nine with all the terms and conditions as written in the staff report.
Second.
Great. Second from Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Well, I think, I mean, I think. Well, I think, I mean, I think the applicants, they've agreed to the terms and conditions of the staff report. I think that it's a reasonable solution concession to fence and provide landscaping on the the east boundary as well as the south and north boundaries for that matter. So it seems pretty above board and typical for this type of application. So I don't see any reason why we should hold up the process here and allow this project to move forward. I appreciate the input and the testimony from both the applicant and the public. But again, I don't see really any glaring issues here with this application, application and or the testimony that was given tonight.
Great. Okay. And with that, we have a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So I'm kind of thinking, this is always dangerous. And I'm looking at the site specific conditions of approval packet page 767. And I guess I wanted to throw up for the, the committee commission to consider. I am a little bit worried about that east property line. And I'm wondering how the commission would feel about requiring a CMU or similar CMU block along that east property line as we have the south property line. And also at widening the landscaping buffer in condition four, which is the east property line from 10 feet to 15 feet. Because, you know, unlike the north side where the, so the drive aisles on the north side, which provides, you know, some space and there's also landscaping up there. But on the east side, right, that is right up against those houses on that east side. And so I guess I'd be interested in seeing who might bite if we wanted to strengthen that, the east side boundary a little bit. And I.
Can I ask, just curious, is this the, I'm just asking a question, is this, are you talking about setback or?
Yeah, just say landscaping along the east property line shall be 15 feet wide.
So is that 15 feet of landscaping or or just?
I would just leave it 15 feet of landscaping because part of it could be grass or
Okay.
bushes or whatever. And then I would amend. Condition five to say fencing along the south and east property line will be CMU or CMU block. So let me propose that as a formal amendment. So I move to amend the motion to accept to make those changes for read 15 and five add and along the east property line.
Second.
Just ask the question. We can work it out. Don't, don't like, I know I sometimes we, I make mistakes when I do this, so let's try, let's try and catch it. As opposed to letting Celine have to sort it out.
Manager. I think we would have to, I think we could either. We can't just make a motion on it, an open motion.
I'm moving to amend it.
Okay.
We would vote on the amendment and then vote on the.
I'll allow it.
There's a amendment on the table seconded by.
Commissioner. Yeah, Commissioner Finn Frack.
That change.
Okay.
So I think it would be good because I'm worried about those people on the east.
So Madam Chair, procedurally, we'd need to take a vote on that.
Amen.
Yeah. Motion to amend and see if it sticks. And then you would have the original amendment to approve with these changes if
Okay.
If they pass.
Mainly just deciding how I should be voting on that. Okay. Okay, great. Let's. Yeah. Commissioner Schaefer.
Commissioner Gillespie, what are we trying to achieve by adding five more feet of landscape?
I'm trying to help out those homeowners where this thing is like, there could be an RV parked right on that line.
Okay, so you're, so it's. Madam.
Commissioner Schaefer.
So are we, are we gonna, I think it's. No, a shrub is not just a shrub.
It's spaced.
Yeah. And so it's depth, but are you proposing that we also need to provide more height within that landscape?
No.
Just more depth, just more distance from the homes is the primary goal.
Yes, and a more substantial wall.
Okay. Right, the CMU. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
This is just a suggestion potentially to Commissioner Gillespie from something that I would personally be in favor of. What I've not heard is, this is a heat island effect. This is 111,000 square feet of asphalt impervious. We just went through a record summer where basically we're looking at is basically an amount of asphalt that's going to attract heat and radiate into the neighbors that live around it. So to Commissioner Gillespie's point, I would agree, but I would add trees to provide some shade, to provide essentially, you know, a cooling effect that is, is, is going to be helpful. Unless I'm missing something because I see on here, it says asphalt impervious.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So a condition for does require along the east property line, 10 class two trees. Because, you know, and I, I'm not widening it enough, I think, to, to add more trees. So I'm just trying to push, you know, back the activity a little bit and make that wall a little bit better sound barrier and more substantive to, you know, help, help buffer the impact on those neighbors.
Manager.
Commissioner Moore.
I'm actually against amending the motion and the reason is being so in terms of light pollution, and that was one of the topics that was a concern, that's a standard condition of approval. Give me one moment, I'll go find that. The standard condition of approval, number three on packet page 767. The light pollution won't cross boundaries, things like that. And then in terms of the urban heat island, I'll totally agree that that's something that on other, on projects, we should be considering when I review blueprint Boise and the only, the only portion of blueprint Boise that I can find that it speaks of urban heat islands in regards to 10 mile creep policies and public service facilities. So it's, it's hard to make an argument for that when there's no requirement on it. Just in terms of blueprint Boise itself. Terms of widening the, the setback, it's a pretty low intensity use. Understandably, you know, getting the RVs and things away from houses does make sense. But in residential neighborhoods, it's not uncommon to have an RV parked in somebody's driveway or something like that. Noise and people coming and going. I don't know how often people kind of move their RVs in this particular location, but it seems relatively low intensity as far as you know, my understanding of a use of this nature. So I'd be opposed to the amendment.
Okay. Let's, oh, Commissioner Finn Frack.
Yeah. So I just wanted to speak to that too. But one of the conditions of the CUP is that the location is compatible to the other uses in the general neighborhood. And I mean, we have a facility here right next to a residential neighborhood, and I think we do have to make some allowances. And it seems like a pretty less invasive allowance, just to allow for a little bit more trees or whatever it is, walls, what, you know, whatever it's going to take to maybe separate those two. And it does have to be compatible to the general neighborhood. And I think in doing that, it allows for that compatibility, at least to a higher level or a better standard. Like the public has asked for.
Chair. As the one who seconded the original motion, I won't be supporting the amendment. I think what we're doing here is substituting our judgment for professional planning staff who've already worked with the applicant. And a lot of us here are professionally trained in this kind of thing, but I just don't think there's any reasons to substitute our judgment for Mr. Wellens on this one. We've got an amendment or we have the 10, 10 foot landscape buffer and requirement for trees. So I mean, I think we've, we've met that. And in the plans, we've got a fence over there. So I just, I don't see what else we're adding by putting a substitute amendment in here.
Okay, I'm also not going to be supporting the amendment motion. I feel like it's a little arbitrary. And I've been convinced by the evidence that was brought by Commissioner Moore citing blueprint and code. Okay, so let's. So the motion that we are voting on now is an amendment to the approval motion that would require 15 feet of landscape and a more substantial wall. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Schaefer.
No.
Stan.
No.
Squires.
No.
Blanchard.
No.
Moore.
No.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Finn Frack.
Yes.
Danley.
Yes.
Motion fails, five opposed, three in favor.
Okay, and then unless there is further discussion, we will move right into the vote of the original motion, which is to recommend approval for CUP 21-39 5200 East Grand Forest Drive for Columbia West LLC. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Stan.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Squires.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Gillespie.
Aye.
Infra, no. Danley.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven in favor, one opposed.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're moving on to item number seven. This is an appeal to CZC 21-245 for Marsha Franklin at 2606 West Stewart Avenue. This is an appeal of the planning director's approval of a co-location of a wireless communication facility. We will start first with the, with staff. And please go ahead when you're ready, Ms. Burke.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the item before you is an appeal of the planning director's approval for the co-location of a wireless communication facility in an R2 medium density residential zone. The subject's streetlight is located in the public right of way adjacent to 2606 West Stewart Avenue. On July 16th, the appellant appealed the planning director's decision based on the grounds for appeal shown on this slide. A memo submitted by the appellant on August 27th elaborated on these grounds for appeal and included the following concerns. That a conditional use permit should have been required as the existing streetlight pole will be replaced with a taller pole. The approval process for the application violated constitutional due process requirements. The propagation study and written analysis provided by the applicant were not sufficient. The city failed to evaluate the noise impacts of the installation prior to approving the application. An interview of the application should be postponed until FCC guidelines and city code have been revised. The planning director's approval of CZC 21-245 was based on the application's compliance with section 11-6-4.2 of Boise City Code, which details regulations for communication uses. A conditional use permit was not required in this case as the replacement of an existing utility pole is not considered to be a new facility. And the poll which is proposed through CZC 21-245 will not exceed the maximum height of the zone. The applicant has provided all forms of documentation that are required by code and the accessory equipments proposed through CZC 21-245 will be stored in underground vaults, thereby minimizing both visual and noise impacts of the project. The application complied with the federal guidelines and local code requirements that were in effect at the time that the application was submitted and reviewed. Therefore, the planning director's approval of CZC 21-245 was not made in error. The planning team recommends denial of the appeal and a motion is needed from the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Martinson. I'm great. Next, we will hear from the appellant, Ms. Franklin. And please. Are you, do we? Oh, great. I see her getting switched online. Yeah, great. Please start with your name and address once you unmute and we'll start with 10 minutes. Is that Ms. Bark online there?
I'm, I'm online, but I believe it should be Ms. Franklin.
Oh, I see Ms. Franklin there. Hi, Ms. Franklin. Um, please go ahead and unmute and you're ready to start with your name and address and you'll have 10 minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Marsha Franklin and I live at 2521 West Stewart Avenue in Boise. I want to first state unequivocally that I did not file my memo late as the applicant alleges in a document that was filed only hours ago. I actually filed my initial appeal document ahead of time on July 16th. On July 26th, I wrote the planner to ask when additional materials were due. She wrote, and I quote, "For appeals of administrative applications, we do not have a set deadline for materials. I asked for further clarification. The planner wrote back, "For appeals of hearing level decisions, there is a 14 day deadline to provide additional information, but the requirement doesn't apply for appeals of administrative decisions." So I am in compliance with all deadlines. The applicant itself could be seen as violating a deadline by submitting their document only hours before this hearing, as it was due last Thursday at 4:59 PM. I also want to preface my remarks by saying that nothing in the documents that I submitted, nor in what I will say today, is in any way impugning the work of our city employees. I know they take their jobs seriously. They're often under great pressure and they're doing the best they can. They've all been very polite and professional in my interactions with them and I appreciate their service. Nevertheless, I strongly believe that procedural errors occurred in the sighting of this facility and in the process of approving this permit. I also believe there are deficiencies in the staff report. You have an additional letter about that. I have to say, this is one of the most difficult things I've ever done because I am not comfortable at all taking positions. Never in my most imaginative moments would I have guessed that I'd be talking to you about this subject or have spent so much time on this matter. But in the end, the same training and skills I've used for the past 35 years in my job are what also led me to realize that something was just not right in this situation. So as a citizen, a taxpayer and a homeowner in my neighborhood for three decades, I felt it was incumbent for me to say something and to seek a remedy. My appeal is focused on procedural issues which are entirely allowable and in fact are critical to consistent and properly functioning government. I will also address a recent DC Circuit Court of Appeals decision because it directly relates to the procedure you will engage in today, namely your vote. The situation began on April 25th, 2021, when I came home from work to find heavy machinery on my lawn and it already significantly damaged it. I learned that the contractor was attempting to bore several large strands of fiber under the yards on the east side of 26th Street from Stewart Avenue South towards Pleasanton. The process was failing. Eventually, a backhoe was used to trench a large hole in my yard. That didn't work, so they opened up the street to lay the fiber. I was confused about the installation because we already have high speed fiber. I was told that it was for 5G that it was terminating at the site of a wooden light pole 30 feet from my property. I was also informed that the pole would be removed for a new pole with antenna panels on it. There had been no notice from the city that such a pole had been proposed or approved. When I called Boise PDS, I was referred to the light pole division. When I spoke with the person there, I was told that when Verizon identifies a pole it would like to use for a wireless communications facility or one that could be removed for a new pole for those purposes, staff will give approval for the pole over the telephone if they see no issues. In that way, so the person I spoke with, Verizon or its agent, doesn't have to submit an application, then potentially have it denied and start the process again. And yet that is the process and it should have been followed. By granting informal approval orally instead of in a written format, then also means it stays out of the public record. And as I understand, it also makes it impossible for the applicant's competitors to learn where their poles will be. This procedure isn't transparent in any way, doesn't comport with city code or the master agreement with Verizon. In essence, it gives backdoor and non-public approval to a pole site before it is formally approved. In this instance, because of that pre-approval as far back as July 2020, the applicant notified the highway district that it was requesting right of way access to bore fiber to the site. The applicant identified the GPS coordinates and the pole number, which is the same pole near my house. With the pole location and the right of way secured, the applicant then engaged in the costly process of laying fiber. It stands to reason that this expense would not have been undertaken without the foreknowledge that the pole would be approved. Administrative approval for this was a fait accompli, just rubber stamping what had already occurred. This denies citizens the right to a fair hearing. There were other procedural breaks as opposed to providing a detailed description of the other sites examined, which is required by code. The applicant provided only a few words, not even a full sentence about two sites, both of which were clearly inadequate to begin with, such as one near a high power line. One was said to be on private property and that is not accurate. These meager descriptions should not have been approved because they don't meet code. Only after my appeal did the applicant provide additional descriptions, but they were completely different sites with no clear indication of what poles the applicant was discussing. If I understand the descriptions correctly, these sites were also inappropriate to begin with because they were either on private property or were too close to homes. So I don't know why they were looked at. Even though additional information is allowable in an appeal situation, it should have been additional information about the sites in the original application, not new sites looked at. not new sites looked at only after my appeal. It seems clear that the applicant didn't do its due diligence in looking for alternative sites because it already had a site, one now with fiber all the way to it. In my memo, I provided photos of several other potential sites. There are even more. Most are on nearby thoroughfares, which are more appropriate places for these facilities and would still provide coverage for the area. You're entirely within your legal right to consider aesthetics when citing one of these FWCs. Indeed, your code says these facilities should not be, quote, visually obtrusive. And yet, this type of pole, which will be much higher than the homes around it and is dark black, is not aesthetically appropriate in this location. In addition, the noise emanating from it is constant and can be considered a nuisance. The applicant also did not do its due diligence for the study required by the city to indicate the need for the tower. That study, which is a one-page drawing, showed no existing facilities in the area which it was supposed to. Those facilities do exist at 23rd and Main, 27th and Main, 24th and Madison, 21st and Madison, 23rd and State, Whitewater and Stewart, and 29th and Davis Street. Another has been approved at 27th and Pleasanton. There is ample coverage in the area. Nor did the initial drawing show that service will be significantly improved after the facility goes in or a before-and-after comparison of coverage. Only after my letter regarding the staff report that was submitted last Thursday did the applicant submit an additional drawing. The study was dated yesterday and only uploaded today after the time period had closed for material. Staff should not have approved this study in the first place. Again, there was clearly no effort put into the study, and it stands to reason that it was because the applicant already had the site it needed. The permit is for the co-location of wireless panels on an existing streetlight. But in reality, the existing wooden pole will be removed, and a completely different pole will be installed, one with a pedestal, antenna, and shroud, underground vaults, and loud cooling fans. Regardless of whether there's a wooden pole at the location now, and regardless of whether the new structure meets height restrictions, this is not a co-location on an existing pole. It is a new pole. Therefore, pursuant to code, a conditional use permit and a public hearing are required. One month ago, a DC Circuit Court of Appeals decision was handed down in which the court found the FCC to be arbitrary and capricious for its, quote, "Failure to discuss the implications of long-term exposure to RF radiation, exposure to RF pulsation or modulation, or the implications of technological developments that have occurred since 1996, including the emergence of 5G technology." The court, which is often described as the second-most-important court in the country, ordered the FCC to either reevaluate its RF guidelines or provide a reasoned explanation as to why it doesn't need to. This is a significant decision. It's entirely possible that in reviewing its reasoning, the FCC will revise its 1996 guidelines. Any such findings in turn could affect the siting of cell towers, such as the one in question. I would ask the commission to delay a decision on this permit until such time as the FCC has met its requirements as mandated by the DC Circuit, and the Boise City Code is subsequently amended to reflect any changes necessitated by that process. And another option would be to delay the decision while a more appropriate location is found. They, they do exist and nearby. If you decide not to delay your decision, I request that the permit be denied for the reasons described above and in the materials I submitted. My appeal memo describes each of those points in more detail. I hope you've had time to read it. Staff responded with its own memo, and in my correspondence filed last week, I show how there are numerous deficiencies in that report, not the least of which is that it remains silent on several of my concerns. In addition, many of the responses are merely conclusory and without evidence, which is not allowable. A staff report, as you know, constitutes the findings for the commission's decision. A decision that is based on faulty report is a faulty decision. In conclusion, thank you for your time and consideration. As mentioned, I truly never thought I'd be here discussing this, but I hope this presentation and my documents give you an understanding of why I felt it was necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Um, next, we'll move to hear from the applicant. Um, again, we'll start with 10 minutes. Um, oh, great, there's Mr. Evans. Just give us a moment, please, while we switch you over to presenter. Uh, Jason, please start with your name and address once you unmute, um, and again, we'll start with 10 minutes.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Jason Evans. My address is 3327 North Eagle Road, Suite 110131, Meridian, Idaho 83646. Um, what you see before you is just a brief summary of where we are and how we've gotten to this point. On the next slide, we'll just kind of review the permit process and the approval and how we got to where we were. So on the next slide, kind of gives you a little bit of timeline. On June 9th, Verizon submitted application for certificate of zoning compliance in accordance with the Boise City Code. On July 9th, the Planning Department did issue its recommendation of approval. On the next slide, it goes into the reasoning behind the written decision. The PCC expressly stated, "As for the detailed and attached report, the wireless communications facility complies with the Boise City Code." It also stated that new antennas, cables, and ground equipment are being installed to provide next, new frequencies to prepare for the next generation and to relieve the capacity coverage of the area. The planning team did find that the applicant's proposal was adequate and will not adversely affect the neighboring properties and is in compliance with the requirements listed above. On the July 16th, the appellant files an application for the appeal of the PDS's staff approval of the applications with the below-written analysis and written memo form that the decision is in violation of the constitutional state or city law, that the decision was made upon unlawful procedure, the decision was an arbitrary, capricious, or an abuse of discretion, discretion, excuse me, and that the decision is not supported by the substantial evidence. Uh, the next page talks about, um, and I believe this was commented earlier, about a, an appellant filed a memorandum in support of her appeal, and that the written memo contains seven grounds upon which she says the appeal should be granted. And on the 13th, the planning staff prepares a written memo for the Planning Zoning Commission's hearing that outlines the reasons why the planning director's approval of the permit was valid and why none of the grounds put forth by appellate are valid or sufficient to grant the appeal. So on the next page, we talk about why the, why the site is needed. On the next page, it kind of just give you a highlight of what you'll see on the next few pages. The green is where the wireless service is good. The yellow is where the service needs to be improved, and the gray is where the wireless service is bad. So on the next page, what you see here, you can see some of the projects, one of the sites off to the right where you see some yellow, where you see some gray. In the area at 26th and Stewart, you don't actually see any coverage. That's because the coverage is not there. On the next slide, we show what the coverage will be, would be after the site was approved and the site was installed and built. This shows you again where you have, where the service needs to be improved, where the service is bad, and where it is good. So we do show an improvement in this area, and these are the maps that were submitted along with staff. The next part of the presentation, I will pass the torch, if I would, and, uh, let our group take care of the next part.
Great. Please just have each person begin again with their name and address.
Okay. So do I do anything at this point?
Who, who next is going to speak for you? Mr. Evans, who's next up on the docket?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Uh, next will be one of the legal reps for Verizon. And I will say her name is Allison. Thank you.
Allison Burke. Great. So those other two hands raised must be part of the group there. Um, so anytime the mic gets switched, just please start again with name and address, just so the record stays clear.
Perfect.
Um, Allison, you are clear to speak.
Okay, just reading. I don't think my video is working, but my name is Allison Burke. I am an attorney for Verizon Wireless. My address is 633 17th Street, Denver, Colorado, 80202. Um, and so we would just like to start first by, um, stating that we fully adopt and incorporate the planning staff's memorandum and their analysis recommending the, um, the denial of the appeal and recognizing that our application was complete and that it complied with the Boise Code requirements in their entirety. Jason, if you could get, just go to the next slide, that would be great. Um, so we'll start first with kind of your standard of review here. Um, just that the Planning Department decisions are accorded great weight when they are the result of the planning staff's specialized and technical expertise, which was applied in this case. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, Jason. And you can skip through as, as we, as we've already mentioned, um, the planning staff has found that our application meets all of the requirements of the code and that each of the documents submitted was sufficient. Go to the next slide. Keep going to the next one. Um, and to the next one as well. Um, and so Ms. Franklin also referenced a recent August, uh, decision from the DC Circuit, Court of Appeals, in which the, um, the DC Circuit did not actually, um, change the FCC regulations. It did not change the guidance. It did not invalidate the Federal Telecommunications Act or existing RF regulations for telecommunications providers. Um, all it did was ask that, um, that the FCC provide a reasoned explanation for its guidance or reevaluate its standards. But as of today, um, and going forward until that's done, uh, the federal telecommunications act is still good law, and the RF regulations that are in effect are still good law, and Verizon complies with both of those. Verizon will not receive its license from the FCC for this particular wireless facility unless it complies with the FCC regulations. And the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission is not allowed to deny a permit when, if Verizon is in compliance with those regulations. And then I think the last thing that we'd like to mention is that Ms. Franklin, um, identified a number of kind of subjective concerns about the look of the pole, that it's taller than the houses, that it's black and unsightly. But none of these are requirements in the Boise City Code, and all of the required documentation was submitted. And from there, I think we'll turn it over to the commission for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Okay, um, before we go to questions, I'm going to just check to see, do we have a representative from the Neighborhood Association? This is the West End. I do see a hand up, but I think, Diane, are you here to testify as part of the public? Hi, Diane.
Yes.
Hi, are you there to? Public?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Just hang tight. We'll get to you, um, after our commission questions here. Um, okay, so seeing no representative for the West End Neighborhood Association, um, then at this point, we will move to questions from the commission for staff, the applicant or the appellant. Madam Chairman. Commissioner Gillespie.
So, um, in my questions, I'm going to folk on, focus on, what I think is the most salient, or the most, um, important, I should say, or, or holds the most weight would be of, of, of Ms. Franklin's objections. Um, and that would be, um, this question of whether a conditional use is required because is this a new pole? And, you know, in a, in a location that didn't have one before? And it, and, and it, because if it is, then it's sort of a, a change of use, and a CUP might be required, as I understand the logic. So is the city's position, help me make sure I understand it, so if you could repeat it, and, or tell me if I'm right or wrong. The city's position is that there's an existing streetlight there. Now, but the, the report says a streetlight facility. So I think of like a factory that makes streetlights. So can you tell me what is there now? How tall is it? And what's going to be there when this is done? And why the city thinks that that change is de minimis and therefore can be an administrative review as opposed to a CUP, if that makes sense?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Gillespie, currently what is located at that location is a 25-foot utility pole that has a city of Boise streetlight on it. Following the installation of the project, if it is approved, um, there would be a 35-foot pole, still with a city of Boise streetlight, but also including the wireless communications facilities.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
And, and what else is on this little triangle, this little piece of property? Is it just like, uh, what, what's there?
So 26.
Is it in the right-of-way for the street, basically? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Gillespie, 2606 West Stewart Avenue was a residential home. Um, the pole is located in the public right-of-way outside of that property.
Okay. All right. Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So, uh, the appellant is alleging that in addition, you know, to the height going up, that there's going to be noise. And I'm trying to figure out some other kinds of, uh, of, uh, deleterious effects, right? So it's basically noise because there's going to be machines running. I didn't quite understand that. And then the folks at Verizon said there's not, you know, there's not going to be a generator there. Could you just explain to me, like, what's really going to be there that might make noise or cause, uh, you know, disruption in the neighborhood, basically? Or is it just a, something that just sits there and hums along, and it's very quiet?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie.
And Verizon, or anyone else can answer to.
Yeah, they can definitely pop in. Um, what will be there is the pole and then three underground vaults that will hold the accessory equipment. As Verizon stated, there's no generator associated with the project. So while it is expected to make some noise, not at a level that would be considered to be adverse to the neighborhood.
Madam Chairman, can the folks at Verizon also talk about that?
Yeah, please go ahead. Just start again with your name, so the record's clear.
That would be you, Allison.
I think that's.
Oh, I'm going to defer to Jason because he has, um, a little bit more of the technical expertise with the actual facility on site.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Hi, uh, Jason Evans, 3327 North Eagle Road, 110-131. Um, yes, to answer the question about noise, there is a slight hum that is created by the, by the equipment. Uh, there is no generator that will run, um, every now and then or anything like that, so there is no generator noise. The hum that you would hear would be the standard noise that you would hear perhaps from a Idaho power transformer box The hum that you would hear would be the standard noise that you would hear perhaps from a Idaho power transformer box or from any type of. Equipment that Idaho Power would as well have in the right of way.
Madam Chairman, one last question. For the appellant or Ms. Franklin. So Ms. Franklin, exactly what, aside from your procedural concerns. Exactly what adverse impact? From the from this poll are you are you? Contending?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I wondered if I have the ability, I did record the noise of the of a pole that's a couple of blocks away from me. That actually at least one resident is finding she can hear it at nighttime. So I don't know if that's something that you would like to hear or not. I can share my screen and you can listen to the sound if you should want to.
You, Mark.
It's your, I mean, I feel like this is your question, Commissioner Gillespie, so you. Let us know.
Ms. Franklin, can we can we hold on that? But so we know about the noise, are there any other like, I just want to make sure we get them all on the table.
Well, I think that. One can only bring up procedural issues in this matter. There are other issues with as the DC Circuit Court has. Asked the federal communications, you know, they've asked FCC to look into the potential health. Aspects of it. And so that is on the docket right now and as mentioned by the applicant. FCC now has to decide what it's going to do, but it has been. Slapped on the wrist by the DC Circuit Court to take a look at the potential health risks of living. Very close to. These this new type of technology, especially children. And to assess its effects on the environment as well. So there there are concerns about that. And there's. Some people are concerned about property value as well. That this is these that I'm concerned, I really truly am concerned with the procedure of how this occurred. It was not transparent and I believe it should have been. And. So, yeah, but I think that there's many people who are concerned about potential deleterious. Effects from being very close. There are studies that indicate you should be 500 meters away, which is about 1600 feet. If you're going to be, you know, in proximity all the time. So that's not my expertise, but.
Thank you. Okay, great.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Finfrock.
And I know I read this somewhere, so this question is for the city, so my apologies, I think it was in your report, but what is the? So the replacement pole, what is the maximum height it can be in this zone per the code?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finfrock, the maximum height allowed in the R2 zone is 35 feet, which is the height of the proposed pole.
Thank you.
Okay. See no further questions from the commission, we will now move to public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify in this item, please virtually raise your hand. Do we have anybody here in house that would like to testify in this item? Please come right on up. All right, seen then, we will move to Diane, you're up, please unmute when you're ready, start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Diane Piggott. I own the home at 2606 West Stewart Avenue where the Verizon 5G tower could be constructed. I have the following concerns about this project and I would like to note that I am not and have chosen not to be a Verizon customer. So all of these wonderful effects are not anything that will result in. Any utility for me. My concerns are as follows, the aesthetics. When I first heard of this lease to Verizon, I imagined a small device being put on top of an existing wooden light pole. I did not imagine a new intrusive 35 foot tall pole looming over our quaint neighborhood. It looks for all the world like something that Elon Musk would launch into orbit. What will this technological installation do to my home's value or marketability? It is certainly not something that we would add to a Realtor's listing. The disturbance of the construction. The 35 foot tall mast that would be about two feet in diameter would be built on a large concrete pad. And I have just now learned with three concrete vaults. In an area where we have planted and nurtured lavender plants. The preliminary construction has already resulted in a lot of disturbance and disruption to the site. The full installation of the pole and the technological hardware on top of the pole will be a major disruption to our very quiet corner. I understand that it is in the road right of way, but we have been stewards of that. Property of that strip of land. Through the time that the house was built in 1946. It is an area that people have tried to maintain to have it appear pleasant. I know that some concerns cannot be addressed in this venue. But I do know that the city arborist has cautioned Verizon to not disturb the existing mature trees. When I look at the site, I can't imagine how this process can be completed without further damage to the existing trees and landscaping. This device is simply not in keeping with our neighborhood or the existing homes. Please find someplace more appropriate for this. Put it on 27th Street where a pole like this would not be such an intrusive eyesore. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Piggott. Next, we'll go to Mr. Greben now. Just give us some, go ahead and yeah, it looks like you're unmuted, please start with your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Craig, are you there? Mr. Greben now. It looks like you're unmuted, but we're not getting any audio.
About now?
Yes, we got.
Okay, thank you. My name is Craig Grebenow, I live at 2608 West Stewart Avenue. I'm a pretty late comer to this process, I only learned of the the hearing today when I got the card in the mail. Indicating that there was a project going on that was under appeal. I, when I had looked down the street earlier this summer, I assumed there was utility maintenance work going on. For existing sewer water, whatever, it was further to the east of my property by one lot and my neighbors already talked. So I only learned about this when the appeal came up and and so far it looks like the. The decisions for the project have been made by the city and Verizon and by going through administrative appeal processes, the neighborhood input has largely been waived, except for the neighbors. Who who who've gotten become aware of the project because of their proximity to it. I was struck tonight by looking at the signal map that the Verizon engineer shared. That it indicates that the signal map really only affects the R2 zone. And the residents of the R2 zone haven't had any vote or any say. Or even any awareness that the project is going on, it's just being done. So so you know, you've heard from the three people who probably are the only three people in the neighborhood there that are aware of this tower project and it's a tower, it's not a, it's not a utility pole. That's a steel tower, you. I would like to hear, see, see the commission review the differences between the photograph of the pole and the packet. And and the diagram or the drawing of the tower, it's a black steel tower with with RF antennas at the top of it, so. So I'm I'm adapting mostly to the process and and the fact that the neighborhood. Is largely ignorant that this process is going on. By having administrative review, if if the neighbors had not become aware and if Ms. Franklin hadn't done the research and the homework and and all of the. The study that she's done, we, I wouldn't be aware, I would not be aware of this tower would be installed and I'd be looking at a tower that I frankly don't need. So. That's pretty much my input, that the administrative approval process. Has not served the neighborhood in in this change.
Thank you, Mr. Grebenow. Okay, last call for testimony on this item tonight. Okay, seeing then, then we'll move to the rebuttal, we'll start first with the applicant for five minutes and then move on to the appellant. Who from the applicant team would like to take it?
I could start, so we would just like.
Sorry, please start again with your name.
Backing up, I'm Allison Burke with Verizon. We would just like to reiterate that the Boise City Code outlines all of the requirements for administrative review. For this wireless communication facility. And Verizon complied with all of those requirements, that's what it's required to do and that's what it did. So any issues with the process or with the submissions, it, you know, it's not. It's directed at the wrong place because the planning staff found in July that we met the requirements and they found again, even after an appeal was submitted. That we still meet those requirements. So that's. That's all that we can be asked to do under these circumstances, so we would, you know, ask that the planning and zoning commission. Deny the appeal and uphold our zoning certificate.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Okay, I'm at this point, we'll now move to rebuttal from the appellant, Ms. Franklin, you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Going back just briefly to the noise issue. They do make noise and there are people who have trouble sleeping near them. I don't know if this one's going to be different, the staff report didn't indicate that, but there's definitely noise emanating from them and you can watch people walk by and stop and kind of go, what's that? As far as the studies go, you know, there's going to be. Obviously, a blank slate when you look at a little map that says how much 5G is there, clearly there isn't any, so it's a spurious. Study, if you were to look at 4G and you look at that what already exists right now for coverage, it's quite sufficient. And there's lots of fiber as well that. There's, there's been no evidence that this is needed in this place. As I mentioned, I listed all of the other wireless communicate WCF's in the area. This is a tower, it is a different. Structure than a wooden pole. And it deserved to have. A conditional use permit process on it. I think nobody has addressed the fact, neither staff nor the applicant. Of all the work that was done ahead of time, why was all that work done ahead of time? It had to have been because the knowledge was there that the pole was essentially was pre-approved. This is not a proper procedure. They should have gone out, asked for a particular pole, gone through the process of proving why the tower needed to be there. And then get it approved or not. And then start the process of. Trunking the fiber. But clearly, clearly, the applicant knew that it had. The ability to use this location and that's why all that pre-work was done. And that's really what triggered all of this for me, it's it's not kosher. It's not right, it's not following procedure to do this. Without any. Public process to do it over the telephone informally. So you know, there are other things that I could bring up that are in the staff report that are in my letter. But I would just say that I feel like the the process here was not followed correctly. And as a result, we have. We are looking at having a tower in our neighborhood that is not. Does not comport with. This residential area at all and that there are places. Very close by on the main thoroughfare like 27th Street. It could be used and still provide the same coverage, I should say too, that the map that was shown. It really doesn't even show that the coverage increases all that much. The little, my house, the house across the street and swimming pool will get better phone coverage. But. For all of what's happening. I was surprised, it really is not substantially boosting coverage, so I really don't feel that the case has been made. That this particular tower needs to be in this particular location. Or that the procedure was followed correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Okay, with that, the public portion of the hearing is closed and the item is before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Move that we deny appeal, CZC 21245 for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Finfrock, Commissioner Blanchard, would you like to start the conversation?
I will indeed, since it's the second appeal we've had tonight. I would just caution people. Here, look, we've seen these things before, this isn't our first rodeo going through these these tower things, we've seen all these legal objections before. And frankly, all the legal objections for this appeal have been debunked all over the country, these are boilerplate legal arguments from opposition groups that do this for a living. Across the country, so I'm really frankly super disappointed to see this as the basis for an appeal. I am sensitive to the fact that people don't understand administrative approval process. And that neighbors don't like change, that that makes a lot of sense to me, but. This is not the way to get your voices heard on these kind of things is to bury us in boilerplate legal stuff that comes from some. Foundation who opposes 5G towers all over the country, it's just, it's not the way to get it done.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Finfrock.
As the applicant pointed out, they've they've met the requirement of the administrative review, so a CUP would have been required. If there was a new pole, but there's already an existing street light in that location, so it's not considered to replace, or so this is considered a replacement pole. And the height has to be under 35 feet. And let's see, and so based on that criteria, you know, a CUP is not required and so it does fall back on that administrative review process. And the applicant appears to have met all the criteria for that, so. Yeah, I'm in support of the motion tonight.
Great, okay, with that, we have a motion on the table to deny the appeal CZC 21-245. For Marcia Franklin at 2606 West Stewart Avenue. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Send.
I.
Schaefer.
I.
Squires.
I.
Blanchard.
I.
Moore.
I.
Gillespie.
I.
Finfrock.
I.
Danley.
I.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to take another quick five minute break, we'll be back at about 8:45. Okay, we are back with item number eight, this is an appeal, CUP 21-35. For Joliet Place at 1803 South Maple Grove Road, this is an appeal of the planning director's approval of a modification to a previously approved conditional use permit. Let's go ahead and start with staff, Ms. Garlic, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, before you is an appeal of a conditional use permanent modification. The project site is 1.71 acres located at 1803 South Maple Grove Road in an A1 zone district. The site was originally developed with a church in 1983, over time, that property has changed hands. The site has been acquired by the Chabad Jewish Center, which filed for a CUP in 2018. That included a church expansion and in addition of a single family dwelling to the site. On July 16th, 2021, the planning director approved a conditional use permit modification for a 1500 square foot addition. Interior modification, new site layout, which relocated a children's play area and trash enclosure. On July 21st, 2021, an appeal was filed by Kathy Johnston on behalf of the Joliet Place Homeowners Association. The grounds for appeal are for the proposed basketball court, which for adversely impacting the neighborhood due to noise. Lighting and obstruction of view. Late correspondence was also received, which included signed petition and letters detailing concerns. Regarding incompatibility and decrease to property values. Staff reviewed these grounds and found that the noise generating from the proposed use will not exceed the anticipated noise from a typical residential neighborhood. Within an A1 zone district, other uses such as schools, playgrounds and parks are permissible uses. Any proposed lighting on the site is conditioned to be reflected away from the adjacent properties. And there are no protected view sheds in the Boise City Code, which does not have any provisions for protection of view. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the conditional use permit modification. And what we need tonight is a final motion.
Thank you, Ms. Garlic. Next, we'll hear from the appellant. Excuse me. Do we have the appellant here? Let's hear from you. Come on up. Please start with your name and address and you'll have 10 minutes.
Good evening, my name is Michael Valentine, I am the Vice President of the Board of Directors for the Joliet Place Subdivision. Along with Mr. Calvin, we'd like to present. Our opposition for the modification, if I could, go ahead and read this. Notwithstanding other fiduciary duties and responsibilities, Joliet Police Neighborhood Association Incorporated Board of Directors hereafter referred to as the board. Has to enforce membership, membership meaning taxpaying owners and real of real estate, real property within the boundaries of the Joliet Place Neighborhood Subdivision. The, we have the duty to maintain and protect not only the its members, but also the the properties and the property values. A short history of the. The property at 1803 South Maple Grove Road, Boise, 83709, which is currently the Chabad Jewish Center. In night from 1990, excuse me, to 2013, this New Life Church. From 2014 to 2017 was faith community. And from 2017 to present, the Chabad Jewish Center. Our foremost mandate of the board is to preserve the property's value, durability and attractiveness. Having a private playground and basketball court in the middle of our subdivision is not attractive for present or future homeowners within our association. The private playground and basketball court in the middle of the subdivision will devalue, devalue every tax. Paying members' property. Additionally, when speaking with homeowners, they have major concern with the noise factor. That will be generated from both the playground and the basketball court as outlined in our petition and opposition. This position, the petition circulated the neighborhood the last week of August and the first week of September. The petition has been rendered with this letter, we hope that those that are overseeing this modification. The petition has been rendered with this letter. We hope that those that are overseeing this modification may put themselves in the position of the Juliet Place homeowners and understand the frustration that could come from having a playground and basketball court within feet of your property without any sound barrier. Almost three and a half years ago, on April second, two thousand eighteen, the same applicant made a condition use permit for approximately forty two hundred square foot expansion of an existing church in addition of a single family resident. Today, we see no expansion except for a concrete slab with the wood awning over it. As in the petition in opposition, signed by residents that live in a quiet peaceful community, the board also questions why a house of worship is requesting approval for modification for recreational use. There are no playgrounds or basketball courts within feet of the private residence in Ada County that we're aware of. Finally, being good neighbors has been and will continue to be important to those that live in Juliet Place Neighborhood Community. In the summer of two thousand eleven, the board addressed issues with the pastor of the New Life Church, and they were resolved again. And again, in the summer of two thousand fourteen, the board had a meeting with the pastor of Faith Community Church with good results. The same cannot be said when it comes to interactions between the board and residences with the rabbi of the Chabad Jewish Center and still ongoing and documented as recently as August twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. Good neighbors also maintain the property. The property at eighteen oh three South Maple Road Road has been in poor shape. After the Faith Community Church moved untreated turf, noxious weeds, untrimmed diseased trees, boats, chairs, lumber and other debris uncovered and not screened from view. For the above reasons, the board of for the membership, the Joy Place Neighborhood Association Incorporated proposes opposes the construction, playground and the basketball court. I I'm here to represent mostly the the people that are going to be close more closely affected by this basketball court that's going to be buttered up against their fence line, which will be feet within the the walls of their home. The positioning of the basketball court is our main concern, along with the noise from the from the playground that is in proposal. Myself and and Mr. Calvin and his family have been residents for over, you know, quite a few years of myself. I've been there over twenty years. That property right there is is pretty much of an ice war. When when you're driving through, it it just hasn't been kept up to quality. The trees are in dire need of help. The grass is barely maintained. And we also see a lot of just scattered debris and so forth around the around the property that is not covered out of view, out of sight of the the neighborhood and our neighborhood is kind of a U shape, but actually goes around the Chabad Jewish Center. And so there will be a lot of reflective noise off the walls of the homes, I believe, echoing so forth from the basketball bouncing on the hard concrete. It just seems that that will be affecting a lot of the neighbors, not just directly along the property line of the of the Chabad Center, but although also how several houses down on on the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Next we'll hear from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Araya Orr and my address is seven two five East Second Street in Meridian, Idaho. Madam Chair and other commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. As outlined in the staff report, playgrounds and parks are in out are in allowed use in an A one zone. Because of this, I'll try to make our rebuttal shortest to not spend unnecessary time outlining items that are already in the staff report. One of the items addressed by the appellant is the issue of sight lighting. As stated in the original CUP, there is a conditional of approval, condition of approval that requires a photometric plan. While we don't have that available to view tonight, this condition of approval is intended to mitigate light pollution onto the neighboring properties. And the exterior lighting is also located centrally on the site, which further mitigates those light pollution efforts. There is also an existing six foot fence, as outlined in the report, on the west and south property lines that are abutting the neighborhood properties. This fence also has a dual purpose of mitigating noise that may be generated from the basketball court and playground. The current use of the site that is not occupied by the building or parking is already being utilized as a park in play area by the Habaad. A new basketball court and playground is not a far cry from the current use. The court is also located strategically to impact as little neighbors as possible. The playground is also located in a similar fashion, being located centrally on the site. The established zoning codes and conditions of approval from this condition or this modification, but also the original permit or conditional use permit are intended to manage noise and light during the use of the site. Additionally, speaking to the instruction of views, the new addition of the MICA will not be higher than the existing building. The extension of the new building is also intended to increase the attractiveness of the site and building, which I know from the appellant is a big issue. And so these the new building or the new addition and the new features on the site are intended to increase the attractiveness of the site. All in all, the playground and basketball court, which are the grounds of appeal are approved uses on the site. And again, this project stands to improve the current state of the existing site and building. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Great. So with that, I will call to see if we have anybody representing the Neighborhood Association. Tonight, I think this is the Southwest Ada County Alliance. Do we have any representative from that Neighborhood Association? Here tonight, it does not appear so. Okay, with that, we'll move to public testimony. Oh, questions from the commission. Sorry, they've got they've got many, it sounds like.
A lot.
Commissioner Gillespie, would you like to kick us off?
I'm going to defer to my friend, Commissioner Schaefer. So polite. Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I have a question for the applicant. Miss Orr, yeah, not the not the opponent, the applicant. Ms. Orr, can you walk us through why the basketball court is oriented as it is?
Yes, the basketball court is oriented in order to like I originally said, the that part of the site is right now intended and used as a big open play area and the Habaad is trying to maintain as much as that as much of that open grassy area as possible. And so orienting it so that the long way is going east to west also helps to keep that open space as large as possible, but also keeps it away from as many residences as possible.
Would you, okay. Would you, it seems to me that this condition, I mean, in this current format, the edge of the basketball court is essentially meeting the property line to the west. Are you opposed to turning the orientation of the basketball court in order to provide more space between? Ninety degrees, thank you, parallel with the playground. So that there is a bigger gap between said basketball court and the west property line.
Um, we would be open to exploring that option. They also, the Habaad is not quite sure that they'll even build the full basketball court. They might start with a half basketball court and in the future intend to build the full court. But I mean, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll punt to my other fellow commissioners for the moment.
Manager. Commissioner Moore.
So is a basketball court or paving, I guess, of of kind of like this, is that allowed in the setback? It looks like there might be a setback right there. It's hard to read. Is that allowed in the setback?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, the flatwork associated with the basketball court does not require a building permit, is not subject to the building setbacks. In addition to the basketball hoops themselves, they are treated like play structures and are exempt from building permit.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So Ms. Garlic, this question for you. So I'm really strongly in favor of just rotating the basketball court ninety degrees so that we create a much bigger buffer to the properties to the west. Does the city see any problem with adding that condition to this CUP? I mean, often, I mean, this is as you know, I always make mistakes doing this.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I do not foresee any issue with the reorientation of the basketball court. There's no other access or circulation that it would be preventing. So I do not see an issue.
Commissioner Gillespie.
And it's my understanding that the way that that would work procedurally is we can deny the appeal, but add the condition. My understanding is because this is an open hearing that we can condition our denial in any way we want.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, that would be correct. You would be able to add the condition.
Okay, great. Thanks. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Delaney, is is there sight lighting in this? Well, I don't think I saw any sight lighting.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer. Lighting was not proposed with this basketball court area. There are external lights associated with the building portion of the project, but all those are again, conditioned to be downward facing with photometric plans to be submitted at building permit.
And those would be a like a wall pack. They're on the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, one more, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
So if I understood, I missed a little bit of your correspondence with Commissioner Moore. There is no requirement for a building permit for the basketball court, therefore, and there's no setback requirement, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Next, we'll move to public testimony. So if you'd like to testify on this item tonight, if you're online, please virtually raise your hand. If you're here in person, please come right on to the microphone.
Starting, is there a way to put up the graphic on the area?
Sure, we can pull up if it's a slide, it's an existing slide.
Right, right before my time starts.
It's up.
I've had PTSD for forty years. So if I get choked, like I'm getting choked right now, that's why.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Can I take the mask down a little bit?
Unfortunately, you we we're asked to wear the masks.
Also, I, before I start. I wrote my notes to my speech here.
Sure.
But I'm not going to be able to read this.
We can't unfortunately accept any correspondence after that deadline, but
they they sent this to me Friday afternoon.
I know.
This is Friday afternoon. They sent me this. And this is has changed my speech for tonight.
Yeah, that's the that's the information we receive also.
Can I can I object if you guys don't accept our appeal? Is there another form to still object to this?
Um, it could go on to city council. There could be an additional appeal. When you are ready, we're going to ask you to move in front of the microphone there at the podium, just so that
And the last thing I want to say, since we're Jewish is in this, I want to make sure that everybody understands there's nobody in our community that's anti Semitic, because that's what came up in our community. Somebody says, well, we
Okay, I'm going to ask you sort of use the microphone and we'll get started with that. This can all be part of a three minute testimony. Start again, please, with your name and address.
Yeah, John Tetra, ninety one twenty West Mediterranean Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh nine. And I'm here to oppose mainly the basketball court. If you look at that, is that up for everybody to see? If you look at that, you can see our subdivision is in the U shape. And if you put up the yellow one, if you don't mind, where that red square is, is where the first church, I'm I've been there fifteen, sixteen years. And we moved that community because it was small. It was quiet. And they say location, location, location. Our house is back away from Maple Grove. Even there, they're expanding Maple Grove right now. It's away from overland there. So it's a quiet area. And the first church, we have no issues with the first church. Their irrigation. The first summer we were there was hitting our fence and where the fence, it's butted up right next to where they planned to put this basketball court. And so we went over and we talked to the pastor. And he was very kind to go out and adjust his sprinklers not to hit our fence anymore. When that church changed to the the next church from New Life to Grace or Faith, whatever it was, changed to that. We had the same issue. We went over and talked to the pastor. We asked him to please adjust his sprinklers. He did. We had no issues there. And then about four years ago or so, when the center moved in there, we had the same issues. We talked to the rabbi. And it didn't go well. And he continues to use his irrigation to hit our fence and it's well documented to our our property management company that we've asked them many times, and they say they've done this, they've done that, but as late as a couple of weeks ago, it still hits our fence. I'm guessing there's thousands of dollars of damage, not on just my fence, but also our neighbors around there from that damage. And that's their fence they're using as a they say some type of a sound barrier between the basketball court and and our homes. There are homes aren't built for sounds, for example. That's that's on a rug. You do that on concrete. I don't know what your surface is back there, but if you do that on concrete, it echoes through our U shape community right there. You see the U shape power subdivision is, and that echoes. And we're feet away from that our home is, and we're not designed for that. Some of us in the subdivision there don't just work nine to five. Some of us work all three shifts. Myself, there'd be days I do twenty hours. Some days I will be resting during while other people might be at work the nine to five shift. And I don't need bouncing balls or people making the noise they make on a basketball court besides balls bouncing on on the court. Even if you rotate that basketball court, it's going to have issues. I say I'm down to eight seconds. Is there any way I could get another minute or two?
I'm sorry, it's written in our city code to allow.
Okay, these people asked three and a half years ago to build a parsonage. I grew up in a parsonage three and a half years ago. They still haven't done anything. They haven't built no parsonage. They put a yawning in a little cement.
Time.
Now they want the world.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We do have one person online with a hand up. Is there anybody else in person first that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing no one left in chambers to testify, we will move to online testimony. Mendel, when you are ready, it looks like you are already unmuted. Please start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mendel Lifshitz, and I serve as the rabbi at the Chabad Jewish Center. And my address is thirty five ten North North Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh three. I just want to make a few brief points. I will let the tone of the appellant's testimony speak for itself, and I will not dignify all of it with a response. Our reps, our architect, et cetera, reached out to Juliet Place subdivision to ask if for a meeting to see if we could have some type of coming together to discuss the project right after they appealed. And the answer was no, they did not want to have any dialogue. I would like to state that this property has been zoned A one, which allows parks, which allows the basketball court. In other words, that is not subject to this conditional use permit, and it's not subject to this appeal. Technically, hypothetically, a basketball court can be built without a building permit without the conditional use permit. This property has been zoned as a as an A one zone before Joliet Place subdivision existed. So every single homeowner that bought a home in the subdivision knew that they were buying a home adjacent to an A one property. In addition, it was already under a conditional use permit as previously mentioned for two property owners before us, using a similar use as a house of worship with excess land that was obviously considered for expansion. A playground, a basketball court, et cetera, is very common for churches and houses of worship. This basketball court will be no different than a neighbor's driveway that kids in the community gather to play basketball in it. And it's not going to generate any more noise than that. Finally, I'd like to say that flipping the basketball court ninety degrees would be a great disadvantage to our usage of the property because it would eliminate any decent size or configuration of a playing field, which is currently there. So if you flipped it the other way, that would actually greatly adversely affect the property usage. Thank you, Madam Chair and all members of the commission. I really appreciate your assistance in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Shifletz. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to testify on this item tonight? Please virtually raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. We will move to our rebuttals and we're going to start with the applicant again. Please start again. Please start again with that, with the name, and you'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Araya Orr. I know that the issue of the orientation of the basketball court is kind of this big, major topic of conversation right now. And looking at the site plan, having it up on my screen, the way that the basketball court is currently oriented on the site is so that it would abut the neighboring properties, but it would be abutting the backyard usages. And so the basketball court would not necessarily be anywhere near the residences themselves or the homes. And looking at the site, rotating it 90 degrees on the site would only put it closer to the homes located on the south property. I'm not sure if you can see that in the site plans that you were given in the report. But again, speaking to what Rabbi Mendellicz had stated, I know that the play area is a large, it's a large item for them, and they want to be able to maintain as large of a play area or play space that they can as possible. And so with that, I would, I would, sorry. I would recommend possibly not looking into rotating it 90 degrees and keeping the original orientation in order to maintain that we are affecting as little properties as possible. And I don't believe I have any other comments.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Next, we'll hear the rebuttal from the appellant, and again, five minutes, please. Do you have a rebuttal to make? Please start again with just your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Do you need my name again?
I do.
John Tetra. I'm president of the Joliet Neighborhood Association, Inc. And my rebuttal is that the people wanting to put this stuff on there, if you look at that picture graphic again, if there's a way to put that back up there. There's a lot of green space there. So the green space that's going to disappear, even though it was three and a half years ago, they wanted to put a parsonage up there. That's, I guess, a one-story house they're putting in there. I think it's a one-story house, and I don't know the square footage, but it's going to take a lot of that green off of that property right there. On top of that, now they're going to lay, I don't know if it's asphalt, concrete, what type of quality of basketball court they're going to put in there, but that's, that's going to take a lot of green out of there, too. As far as what the rabbi said, that he approached our management company about having a meeting about issues to, to discuss that. And that we didn't want to have that meeting. That's not true at all. It was that all they want to talk about was putting in this basketball court and playground. And we're, we don't want any modifications, more modifications made to that property. And they talk about other houses of worship having playgrounds. I don't know one house of worship in this county that has a basketball court within feet of private property. I'm not even sure if there's basketball courts within feet of anybody's private property, and I would hope the people sitting up there that make these decisions would think about if you were in that close proximity, if you're one of those homes that lived in that close proximity of that, would you like a basketball court put on there? And I know I spoke earlier as just a resident of the community. But Mike said his piece. I also, my wife and I sent a letter in. I don't know if it's part of your package there or not. But I grew up in a parsonage. My dad preached from the Greek and Hebrew. I'm very familiar with this. And I also know that my father never accepted one dime for the government for anything. And I know, I know this varies from this, but we're all taxpaying homeowners there that work hard. And we pay property tax. That, that section right there doesn't pay a dime of property tax that I know of. Now, I know this might vary from how you guys look at this, but this will devalue my property. I've spoken to two people that sell property. And they say, yeah, having a basketball court on the other side of your fence will devalue your property. That's not good. Also, hearing that noise during the day, and you can't appreciate that ball bouncing on your carpet didn't reverberate like it reverberates on concrete. And you're talking about turning it 90 degrees. They even poo-pooed that idea. They don't want to do that. That was going to affect the other homes. Well, it's, that's a U-shaped subdivision. When a noise is made on that property, it goes through the whole thing, like knocking off all those houses there. In fact, on the other side of the street, you can actually hear. And my hope that you guys would consider this, even though it's maybe legally okay to, to put one in there. Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's morally or ethically right to put one in there. So for all those reasons, and I'm trying to think of what, what else they talked about, but it kind of baffles me when a man that would get in my wife's face, yeah, change up the butt there. That's my wife right there. That man that you heard talking earlier got in her face one day, was yelling at her. I happened to see it from my window, it was about 30 yards away. I was in his face in a minute. Surprised he's still on his feet, but that has nothing to do with what's going on today, but they are terrible neighbors. And of anybody, a church, a house of God should love their neighbors. Not sit here and move into a place and start adding on stuff and asking for things from the state. Let us add this, let us add that. And still, after three and a half years, they haven't done anything. They haven't broken ground on their parsonage. They haven't made any expansions. They put up a concrete 10 by 20-foot place and put it on and over it. That's all they've done in three and a half years. And now they say, oh, we didn't think about maybe doing a half court. Then we maybe would do a full court. Well, pretty soon, there won't be any green left on that property. Right now, there's boats out there, there's garbage out there, there's lumber out there in plain view. And I see my time's up, but I don't know how to address you guys, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we will close the public portion of the hearing, and the item is now before the commission.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Right. I'm going to move to deny the appeal of CUP 21-35.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Squires online there. Nice to hear from you.
I've tried to talk a couple of times, sorry.
So you're doing great. Is there discussion? Would you like to start, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I think at a high level, I don't see much of solid ground to support the appeal. I don't think there was any sort of, any misjudgment by approving the playground or the basketball court in this, in this situation. I would like to entertain with my fellow commissioners adding a condition to this appeal that the basketball court be located away from the property line. I'm not quite sure how best to phrase that. You know, we have testimony that says they're discussing now a half-court basketball court. It seems to me, though, just in the spirit of being neighborly, you know, we would, we would want to see this basketball court away from the property line. Right? It sounds like, you know, there's, it's not the best relationship, you know, between this organization and the neighborhood currently. But I'd like to see, you know, at least maybe that olive branch presented out there. And then I think on the flip side of that coin, I would really hope to encourage the neighborhood to be a little bit more accepting that we're talking about a playground and a basketball court. You know, these are facilities that are used by children. And I think, again, in the spirit of being neighborly, a little bit more welcoming attitude would be appreciated. So I guess that's my, my thoughts right now. Again, I don't see much ground for the appeal. But I think that, again, exploring a better location for the basketball court would benefit all parties.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Squires.
I concur with everything that Commissioner Schaefer said. You know, we're pretty limited in what we can review tonight, and there's obviously a lot of emotion. And I heard it on both sides. And I'm sorry for the situation that you each find yourself in, and I'm hoping that you can come to some sort of agreement to be able to live and work next to each other. But the reality is, is that these are permissible uses. You know, anyone at any time could go put in their own basketball court in their own yard if they wanted to. To ask us to, you know, ask the church not to do that or to not allow that, we don't have that right to do that. Again, I think staff did a great job. Delaney did a great job at outlining, you know, these are permissible uses. View sheds, you know, that was one of the items for appeal. View sheds are not protected. We have to say this, I think, at every meeting these days. That's just simply not something that we can control. And, you know, the lighting was an item, but it doesn't sound like that's truly an issue at this point. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up is, you know, there's always this conversation about property values and what will be impacted. And what I can tell you as a professional planner and someone who's been in economic development for 22 years, is that neighborhood churches typically impact property values in a very positive way. I, I cannot imagine in any situation where this would be negatively impactful to neighbors and to your property values. Again, that's not something that we can really even consider tonight, but I just wanted to put that on the record. And regarding the comments about property not being maintained, there are processes for that. If that is indeed the case, I, I can't say yes or no if it is. But if it is, there's city code enforcement. Hopefully, you all can come to a agreement to be able to work together moving forward. But again, there's a separate process for that alone. Again, I think this is, this is a good use of the property, and I hope that you all can come to some sort of consensus together. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Mr. Smith, our city attorney.
Just for the record, James Smith, deputy city attorney, just wanted to note to follow up that comment that to the extent commissioners are concerned that there isn't any discretion to consider, you know, to hear testimony about alleged adverse impacts and to decide whether the evidence does or does not show adverse impacts to, to neighboring properties, you know, whether from the, you know, the increased intensity or location of a basketball court. The commission certainly has that discretion, but of course, that's not to say whether, whether you're obligated to find that there are adverse impacts. So commission does have that discretion to consider that evidence, but just want to clarify that for the record to aid in, in any further deliberation.
Thank you, James.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley, I think, and then Commissioner Moore.
I'll be supportive of the motion, but I actually would encourage potentially this change in the orientation of the basketball court for a very good reason that hasn't been brought up yet. I grew up, I grew up playing basketball, and this is probably going to be an indication of how well there are a lot of basketballs. They're going to go over that fence. There's going to be a lot of kids shooting from half court that that ball's going to go sailing right over the fence. And it's going to be a bad, a worse situation potentially. That's going to cause more acrimony that already exists. And while I respect and understand the desire to preserve the play space, this, in that instance, the noise is going to be the noise. I, I don't think that's going to change. I know that's not going to change. But at the very least, we can do something about that, and I think we should.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
A movement that we amend Mr. Schaefer's motion to include a new condition that the basketball court be rotated 90 degrees so that it has a north-south orientation and that to the maximum extent possible, it be placed away from the western property line and the southern property line, too. So I've made that motion.
I hear that you have.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a second. Okay, a second from Commissioner Danley.
We've talked about it, so I think we should.
Okay. Commissioner Moore.
I do want it, I do want it, and all seriousness, now that I think about it, my computer died, we've been here so long. But, you know, this is an open record. I think the fifth criteria for conditional use permit is, you know, it doesn't adversely impact other properties. I think this is a very reasonable thing to do to minimize impact, and I think it would, I, I don't think it'll adversely affect the applicant's ability. They've got a lot of land, so I don't think it's a big deal there. I disagree with Chris that the way it's oriented now, if you shoot a layup and you're driving east, you're going to run into the wall. And if you shoot a layup driving west, you're going to run into a fence and chuck the ball over into this guy's yard. So like, guys, let's just, we have an adverse impact here. We all know it's not like the end of the world, but let's just rotate that court. We can do it. So I'd like to do it.
Okay, I'm going to go to Commissioner Moore, because she was up next. Commissioner Moore.
So I'm in support of motion, rotating and getting that basketball court away from the, from the fence. And for childcare uses, one of the discretionary conditions of approval is to provide fencing or landscape screening from adjacent properties. And I know this isn't a childcare use specifically, but it is a child play area that you might expect to see in a childcare use. And a use like that, additional landscaping might be required there. Makes sense that it might be required here, just in a similar use. So I'm in support of the motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Blanchard.
No, I will be supporting the Commissioner Gillespie. I thought the exact same thing, having played basketball in high school, that there's going to be a lot of balls over the fence. That's one thing, but just the other thing, too, is it just doesn't make any sense from a circulation standpoint to have concrete barrier going across the whole property. Doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Okay, I guess I'll speak. I am not supporting this amendment to the motion. I think it's worth suggesting to the applicant that they may never see their balls again if they go over the fence, and that's a consideration. But from, from my perspective, that is not our scope of work. And the landowners are using their land appropriately as outlined by city code. So I will not be supporting the amendment to the motion. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the vote for the amendment to the motion that would require a 90-degree
Rotation amendment.
Of the basketball court.
Dan.
No.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Infrak.
Yes.
Danley.
Yes.
Motion carries seven in favor, one opposed.
Okay, and then the next motion then is to, we have a motion on the table to deny the appeal of CUP 21-35 at 1803 South Maple Grove Road with the condition that the basketball court be rotated 90 degrees. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Dan.
No.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Infrak. Danley.
Yes.
Motion carries seven in favor, one opposed.
Okay, next up is item number nine. This is.
Madam Chairman. Looking at the time and what we have left, may I,
Yes.
may I suggest we cut loose number 11 for tonight and hear it next week? Because otherwise, we'll be here really late. Sorry, pal. What do you guys think? I mean, we.
We, yeah, I'm, I'm open to discussion on that. We are asked to not take new business after 9:30. We still have two items on the docket. But it's at our discretion.
But we.
Madam Chair.
We'd have to defer it and hear from testimony of people who can't come back.
Yes.
That's correct. I believe the next item will go pretty quickly, and so then the bulk of the time would be for number 11.
Okay, I say, go for it. No, no, I don't want to defer it, but if I'm here till 11, that would sink.
We've talked, and number 11 should be quick.
Number 11.
All right, let's go for it, Meredith. What do you think? You're the.
I think you just like to make it a longer night by the chit-chatting.
Okay. Um, let's, I, I say we just power. Um, let's, I, I say we just power through. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Let's do it. So again.
Delaney's already standing up.
We're going to start with item number nine. PUD 21-37 for JBI Elemental LLC at 2393 North Wildwood Street, a modification to previously approved planned residential development. Please go ahead. Oh, and it also includes SUB 21-40 for atrium heights. Also at 2393 North Wildwood Street, a preliminary and final plat. Please go ahead, Ms. Garlick.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you, as a crest for the PUD modification and subdivision, the project site is 0.97 acres located at 2393 North Wildwood Street in R1C Zone. The applicant requests a conditional use permit modification comprised of eight attached single-family townhomes and one detached single-family home. Also included is the preliminary and final plat for one common and nine buildable lots. In 2018, a PUD was approved for eight attached townhomes as a multifamily product and one, one detached single-family home. A request to rezone the site from A1 to R1C was also approved at that time. The current applicant is requesting to modify that original PUD to convert the eight attached multifamily townhomes into eight attached single-family townhomes on individual lots. The project includes waivers for the interior side setbacks, lot sizes, and lot width. The planning team is in support of these requests as they are interior to the site. With the recommended conditions of approval, the proposed development will be compatible with the surrounding residential area as it meets all perimeter setbacks and height requirements of the R1C Zone. Planning staff recommends approval with conditions. The motion needed this evening is a recommendation to city council for the subdivision and a final decision for the PUD modification.
Thank you, Ms. Garlick. Next we'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Delgado. Please start with your name and address and you'll have 10 minutes.
My name is Jory Delgado. I'm with JBI Elemental. I apologize for not getting my video to work. I had to join on my phone because my computer died. I'm going to keep this short. I figured it would be on the consent agenda just because we completely agree with all of your guys' recommended conditions of approval, so I don't want to waste anybody else's time by going back through all of this. So with that, I'll leave it to you guys.
Thank you, Jory. Okay, next I will call to see if we have a representative from the West Dollar Neighborhood Association present. Okay, seeing none, then we would move to questions from the commission for staff or the applicant. Okay, seeing none. We'll move to public testimony. If you'd like to testify on this item tonight, please come right on up to the podium or virtually raise your hand. We did have somebody on the signup list, Roger Johnson and Sandra Johnson, but I don't, does not seem that they are present now.
Madam Chair, they sent an email about an hour and a half ago saying they couldn't get on Zoom.
Okay.
I tried calling and providing a Zoom link.
Okay.
And have not heard a response back. And that was about two minutes after they sent that email, so.
Okay. Okay. With that, we would move to rebuttal from the applicant, but as there's been no testimony, Jory, would you like to take the time? You'd have five minutes for rebuttal.
Um, I, I think I'm good again. Our team is, our team is good with all the conditions of approval. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer, but I feel like I have talked to the planner, Delaney, about this multiple times, so I think that we're good with all of your guys' conditions.
Perfect. Okay, great. So at this point, the public hearing is closed and the item is now before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move that we approve PUD 21-37 and recommend approval of SUB 21-40 for all the reasons stated in the staff report.
Great. We have a second from Commissioner Finfrock. Commissioner Moore, would you like to start the discussion?
No, it's fairly straightforward. You know, it's a shame that the opposition wasn't able to, to connect, but I have no disagreement with anything written in the staff report.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion in front of us to approve PUD 21-37 and to recommend approval for SUB 21-40 at 2393 North Wildwood Street. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Dan.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Squires.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Gillespie.
Finfrock. Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay. Last item on the docket, item number 11. This is PUD 21-39 for Hawkins Companies at 2454 East Gowan Road. This is a modification to previously approved planned residential development to increase the number of multifamily units. We'll first start with staff. When you're ready, Mr. Moser, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting a modification to a previously approved planned residential development, which consists of 270 multifamily units and a height exception of 11.2 acres in a C4D and R2D zone. The proposed modification to the development will the proposed modification to the development includes increasing the density and changing the site plan. The applicant is also proposing a general height exception to apply the C4 zone standards to the R2 zone portions of the property. As you can see here on the aerial photograph, the site is located at the intersection of Grand Forest Drive and Gowan Road and adjacent to the west is a shopping center to, and to the north and east is a residential neighborhood. Less than a quarter of a mile away from the property is a regional activity center located at the intersection of Federal Way and Gowan Road. The commission approved a plant, this planned residential development a few months ago, and this approval was appealed to city council. Council approved the project with additional conditions regarding the design of the main service drive through the site. The applicant is now requesting to modify, to modify the project. The, the main modification proposed is increasing the density from 270 to 287 dwelling units. This will be achieved by increasing the building height of three buildings from three to four stories. The applicant is also requesting a general exception to apply the C4 zone to the R2 zone portions or to the R2 zone portions of the, of the site, which is generally to the north portions of the property. The final, final modification is to change the site layout. This is, this is required to accommodate the changes to the main service drive required by city council, which includes providing angled or parallel parking spaces along the service drive and, and to include traffic calming features. Two letters from neighbors were received by the planning team. And with these letters, both the neighbors stated that they were not necessarily opposed to the, to the modification. They just had some concerns. One of the letters expressed concerns with the proposed angled parking along the service drive in, in terms with the, the share row that was also being proposed there as the traffic calming feature. And the second le- letter expressed concerns with any future potential modifications of the, of the development itself. This is the proposed site plan, which identifies the building being, or identifies the, the site design and shows the buildings which are being in red, which are being increased from three to four stories. The height of the four-story buildings are 45 feet with only the stair tower elements reaching a height of 48 feet. The height of the C4 zone is 45 and a height exception was approved with the original PUD. You can also see the changes to the site design and the angled parking along the main service drive here and which connects back out to Grand Forest and connects into the shopping center. Also included, this as noted, are traffic calming features, which includes signage indicating that this is a, a share row, which is essentially a shared bike and vehicle pathway. So in conclusion, the, the planning team recommends approval of the modification since it complies with all the required findings as per code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Next we'll move to here from the applicant. Please start with your name and address and you'll have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners. My name is Ethan Mansfield, representing Hawkins Company at 855 West Broad Street, Suite 300. It's great to be presenting to you all again, and I am pleased to present an improved Canyon Ridge apartment project, PUD 21-39. David did an excellent job outlining the project and the changes we've made to accommodate an additional 17 units as well as the changes we've made to incorporate city council's conditions as a result of the previous appeal. As you can see, the project is still located on the northwest corner of Gowan Road and Grand Forest Drive. Next slide, Dave. Thanks, sir. The layout is very similar to the previously approved project. We simply added a fourth story to the three-story garden-style apartments circle here in red. We also shifted several townhome units to the northern edge of the development and extended a drive aisle southward to connect to the primary access drive. Next slide, please. None of the buildings on site will exceed the 48-foot height limit granted in the previous approval, which as a reminder, only exists to house elevator equipment in the center of the roof. The rest of the apartment building tops out at 45 feet. Next slide, please. In response to commissioning council's concern that the project provided too much parking, we reduced our parking ratio from 1.85 spaces per unit to 1.75 spaces per unit. We are providing 64 parking spaces less than the maximum allowed by Boise City Code. Next slide, please. Overall, it's a pretty straightforward project with minimal changes from the previous approval. As such, we respectfully request your approval of PUD 21-39 with the terms and conditions listed in the staff report. Thanks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Next I'll ask to see if we have representative from the Southeast Neighborhood Association. I don't see him online. Great. Okay, seeing none. Then we'll move to questions from the commission for applicant or the city. Even Mr. Gillespie is allowed to ask questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
Just a couple of quick questions. So, Mr. Moser, can you remind us, the commission, I don't see a letter in here from the school district. I know we got one from the, in the original application, and I understand this being a tweet to the original one, there's probably not a requirement for them to submit one, but can you remind for the, for us for the record, what this Boise School District said with regard to the capacity of, of their nearby schools in this project?
This chair, members of the commission, offhand, I don't, I don't know if they said anything specific other than what their standard letter would be provided if it was a Boise School District, which is that the, the applicant has made conditions to comply with their, with their requirements and that they will provide school or provide a classroom space for the children. They may not necessarily be in the, in, in a nearby school, but they will provide the space. And that's usually what their, their, their letters that they always, that they send to the, to the planning staff say. And I didn't receive anything new with this one. It was a minor modification.
Thank you. My other question to Mr. Mansfield, welcome to be here. My question is, is that there seems to still be a little bit of lingering question as to whether there's going to be angled or parallel parking with the access road. I know one of the letters that we received had to do with the sheros and bicyclists going through there and the ability of drivers on, was specifically around angled parking to be able to see bicyclists and be sure, especially those, you know, lower profile and so forth. Has there been any sort of a decision made on that? And can you kind of walk through pros, cons, what, what you're ultimately thinking at this point?
Commissioner Danley, Madam Chair, Commissioner Danley. We did incorporate city council's condition of angled parking. We added the sheros to enhance bike connectivity through the site, which was a condition of council, councils, while still maintaining the 30-foot wide direct access required by the easement language in the master declarations of the shopping center. We, we considered installing dedicated bike lanes. However, that, we felt when placed within the drive aisle within the angled parking, we could have actually potentially more conflict and that just didn't make sense to us. Given that we had to maintain that 30-foot wide unobstructed drive aisle, no parking within there, no anything else really. We felt that sheros provided some acknowledgement that bikes could move through the project without compromising the 30-foot required direct access.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
So just as a, sort of planting a seed, one of the concerns I guess I would have with that, I, I think that the council did a good job. We raised this very discussion here with regard to maintaining what we know was a private road and so forth, but sheros need to be maintained. They have to be kept up. They fade, you know, and, and as soon as they do, people forget that they exist. It's not arguably the best tool in the shed, as you know, but it is a tool. And so just something to consider is that those things have to be maintained and, and I, obviously you all are responsible to do that.
Your question?
No.
Okay. Great. Do we have any other questions from the commission for staff or the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
So first staff, is this, this property is in an airport overlay? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, that is correct. It is in a, in a, a B1 airport influence. And all that was generally settled with the original CUP and the conditions that we attached to the original COP will still be maintained with this about notice, or noticing the, the neighbors through the lease agreement that they're here. Though I would also note that the airport is okay with this going in because it is outside their sound, 65 decibel sound contour, which is now the sort of the triggering mark. So the airport has, as with the original one, signed off on, on this and the, and the increased density.
Manager.
Commissioner Moore.
The quick follow-up. And so with the increased height, they don't have any issues with adding extra stories on those three buildings?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, they do not, and the buildings are not getting any higher than what's already on site than the other buildings around it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Question for Ethan. Ethan, how, did you guys select? I'm just curious more than anything. How did you select the buildings that were going to go from three to four stories?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schaefer, those were the only garden-style apartment buildings that were three stories. Basically, all of the garden-style apartments are now four stories tall. We felt that to be the kind of least impactful way to increase the density of the project to kind of meet what you guys were looking for.
Guys, okay, thanks.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. We will now move to questions from, I'm sorry. Public testimony. It gets to that witching hour. Do we have anybody present in chambers that would like to speak on this item? Please come on up. And I do see one hand raised online. If there are any others, please go ahead and raise your hand online too. Please go ahead and start when you're ready. You'll have three minutes. Please start with your name and address.
My name is Stephen Leonard. I live at 3704 East Alta Ridge Court about a quarter of a mile from the development. I was one of the appellants of the original submission of this project, live in the adjacent Columbia Village neighborhood and testified at both the April planning and zoning hearing and the June city council here. Along with several others, I was in agreement with the eventual resolution to June city council meeting that allowed the project to proceed essentially as proposed with the important caveats that the access road to the north to Grand Forest Drive would be preserved, possible bike paths would be explored, and adequate parking would be assured so that the residents of the 270 approved dwelling units would not have to overflow their cars onto city streets, Grand Forest Drive, or the Columbia Marketplace parking lot. This became more important as the final approval included changing the parking to, from perpendicular to either angle in or parallel, which did somewhat reduce parking along that road. Mr. Danley hinted at the very end of the April meeting that the commission would welcome future application to nearly double the number of residential units and reduce the number of parking spaces further. But no such provision was agreed to in the final approval by city council in June. The present proposal to add 17 additional residential units is not objectionable in this context. But it must be made clear that this is the final number and that no further expansion of the project or reduction of available parking will be entertained or approved. As presently authorized, there will be well fewer than two parking spaces per unit, although most families, whether married couples or sharing roommates, need two cars to live, work, and recreate. Anyone visiting them, even under present plans, can anticipate some difficulty parking. Any further increase in the number of units or decrease in available parking might unacceptably impact the surrounding neighborhood and the businesses in the Columbia Marketplace with overflow parked vehicles. As Commissioner Danley suggested, numerous residents of the surrounding neighborhoods have expressed alarm over the increased burden that this development. over the increased burden that this development will place on the already overcrowded Trailwind, Trailwind Elementary and Lebois Junior High School. These concerns have apparently still not been addressed. Any further expansion would compound this unresolved problem. Mayor McLean and the members of the city council expressed both surprise and pleasure at the amicable accommodation reached between the project developer and the impacted residents and adjacent business owners at the June meeting. That accommodation followed from the expectation that all parties were acting in good faith. While this minor increase in the number of units is inconsequential, it should be made clear that there will be no further substantial changes to the, to the proposed project. Other than that, I have no objection and no further comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Okay, let's move online. Um, we'll start with Mr. Morales. Jordan, uh, please unmute when you're ready. Start with your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. Uh, my name is Jordan Morales. I live at 4647 East Narcissus Court in Columbia Village, um, the neighborhood next to this development. Um, uh, thank you for all the time that you spend. I've been listening in the entire time, grateful for all you do for the city. Um, I'm gonna keep this short and ditch my full three-minute testimony, just to say that I am a neighbor in support of this project. Knowing, um, the great disparity in the number of housing units that we have in our city, particularly apartments, and what that does to people like me several years ago before I was able to afford to buy a home in this neighborhood. Uh, we rented a one-bedroom back in 2011 for $520 a month. That same unit went for $195 a month last year when I saw it online. So there is definitely need for this. Um, I've heard the complaint, or the, the fears of schools being overcrowded. And I have three children, depending on the day, might have, you know, might want to have more. But, um, you know, I wouldn't expect Trailwind to expand unless the need was there. We live in one of the best school districts in the state, and I absolutely believe that we can handle additional kids development is, um, is added to our neighborhood. This is a great area for this kind of density. It's next door to high, um, that, and next door to, um, highly dense apartments already, next door to a shopping complex that honestly probably will become better because of these housing units. And, um, it's also within a bike ride of our state's large, one of our state's largest employers. So I fully support this project and the additional units. And also just want to encourage Hawkins to, uh, consider, um, allotting some of these additional units to affordable housing. Um, in a neighborhood meeting, they noted they don't have any, they don't accept housing vouchers or any projects. And I would love to see if there's a way that they could figure out how to, how to be able to do that in this, um, this community and be good corporate, social, uh, responsible citizens of our business committee. Uh, that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Uh, next we'll hear from Mr. Mason. Um, just give us some, okay, Scott, go ahead and unmute when you're ready. Please start with your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Thanks very much. Um, my name is Scott Mason. I live at 2901 East Hartleaf Lane. And I, I don't have blanket opposition to the amendment. Um, and I'm sorry to take up time with this because I, it does really only, I think, affects, um, us here at our house. But we're right on the corner of East Hartleaf. And the units on the east side, uh, that will be going up to 45 feet look directly into our, uh, master bedroom and kitchen dining room. So it's definitely gonna have an impact on us. And I see that there are some trees, I think, of class two trees shown on the drawing. But those definitely are not going to be tall enough to block lines of sight, uh, into our home. Um, I have had some dialogue with Ethan and, uh, and Hawkins, and, uh, I do appreciate their, you know, willingness to engage uh, and acknowledgement, you know, that, that we are impacted by this. And they've offered us, um, $500 to, you know, to help plant trees on, on our side of the road, which I think would absolutely be a solution for us. Uh, I just don't think that, you know, $500 is gonna get us much. And I, I don't know what avenue the city has to help us. I don't know what options we have through this process. But I do think, particularly when we go to 45 feet here, um, it, it really is gonna have a, you know, daily impact on our lives, um, here in our house. And I, I'm hoping that someone can, can tell me, you know, there is an option, there is some way that everyone can get what they want. Um, you know, without too much suffering. Um, but I think that's all I have. Uh, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Um, so I don't see anybody else last call for testimony on this item. Okay, with that, we will move to rebuttal from the applicant. Um, please start with your name again. You'll have five minutes.
Madam Chair, commissioners, this is Ethan Mansfield, uh, representing Hawkins at 855 West Broad Street, Suite 300, Boise, Idaho, 8702. Um, I just have a couple of things to touch on. Um, we have no plans to increase the density at this time. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there. Um, Commissioner Danley, we will commit to maintaining the sheros. I think that's really important as an avid bike rider myself and bike commuter. And I'd also like to offer up that we, you know, we do plan on, on creating a full landscape plan that meets all the requirements of the, uh, design review and Boise City Code um, at the design review phase. So, um, that will certainly get another look and, uh, we can ensure consistency with the design review standards and code at that time. Uh, finally, I want to thank you guys for spending the evening with us. I know it's gone on a long time and I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Okay, with that, we will close the public portion of the hearing and the item is now before the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
I move that we approve PUD 21-39 in all, with, with all of the terms and conditions in the staff report.
Second, great, we have a second from Commissioner Fenfrock. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Danley.
Um, I'm gonna read this real quickly and then just li- list off a few things. The location is an infill site in an employment-centric area with thousands of jobs within a mile of the site. Additionally, it is within a walkable and bikeable distance to a public park and a grocery store. The location may reduce trip length and encourage bike and pedestrian use, and the higher density is supportive of future bus service. That's just one piece of what Compass wrote. Compass never writes things like that. It tells you a lot about this application. And, and I think it speaks volumes of it. For 25 years, this spot has sat, had set vacant. The market didn't come about with commercial or retail, which would have induced way more vehicle trips than a residential use. IDD had no problem with it. ACHD had no problem with it. We have a number of things within the city that we're trying to do with regard to housing, multiple types of housing. This gets there. We're trying to get to things like, like, like climate change, gas, greenhouse gas reduction, water preservation, air quality. All of these things are in this application, and I commend the applicant for doing so. To the one app, to the one person who did testify with regard to the trees. Uh, yes, there is a pro- a program right now that the city of Boise has and is running with. And it's, and it's a collaboration with Tree Canopy Network as well as IT Idaho Power. And it's to plant, I can't remember, but it's something like 200, 250,000 trees. Idaho Power gives these trees away, um, all the time. And so absolutely, there's some mitigation that can be done at, in, in some cases, no cost. Um, in fact, I know the city does this because it's right on our website. It is, certain things can apply, but most of the things I'm sure will, will be met. So yes, I emphatically suggest, support this application and will vote to approve the motion.
Great. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing then, uh, we have an, uh, item before us to, a motion for us to approve PUD 21-39 for Hawkins Companies at 2454 East Gowan Road. Uh, will the clerk please call the vote?
Then.
Aye.
Shafer.
Aye.
Squires.
Aye.
Lantern.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Gillespie.
Aye.
Fenfrock.
Aye.
Danley.
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.